Welcome to the Village Buchanan Board of Trustees regular meeting of September 7th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021. And I would ask everyone, let me put this up. Finally have a flag, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God.
God.
Indivisible, liberty.
Liberty, justice, for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Let me remove my flag now. Okay. So first, let's go to the approval of minutes, the May 25th, 2021 workshop meeting. I do have one correction. Right on the first line, Mayor Nikabacher stated that at the community and its unity, not union, meeting. Okay, anyone else have anything?
I have nothing.
Yes, one thing on page three. Let's see, there's the first paragraph that takes up half the page. And near the bottom of that. Trustee Murray responded, I am an employee of the village and hopefully at the next planning board meeting, you will have the same public discussion because you did appoint a planning board member who is also an employee of the village, I'm thinking that that was meant to be employee of Poltech. Sean, can you confirm that?
Don't recall.
Okay, we were talking about people that work for Poltech.
No, you had to go to video.
With the village and I believe that that was meant to point out that there is another, a planning board member who is also an employee of Poltech. All right, perhaps then we can go back. I don't.
Right, I'll check the video and fix it or leave it. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so then let's table that for now then, until that's resolved. On July 13th, board meeting. Any questions, corrections, comments? Are we good?
Let's see. On the, yes, one thing on the last page, 28. In the third sentence down, trustee Zachary was at the LWPR. I know it's silly, but it's supposed to be LWRP.
Okay, we'll fix it. Anything else? On a motion to approve the meeting, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving along to the July 20th meeting, corrections, comments, questions.
I have nothing.
Nothing.
No.
On a motion to approve the minutes of July 20th.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on July 27th?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Okay. On a motion to approve the minutes of July 27th workshop meeting?
I'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
August 3rd, board meeting. Questions, comments?
I have, I have one on page two.
Okay.
Down in the bottom on resolution repealing the law, the last sentence, it should be trustee Function and trustee Zachary are opposed, not trustee Murray.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. On a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, August 23rd workshop meeting. Same, questions, comments, corrections? Nothing, okay. On a motion to approve the workshop meeting of August 23rd?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Same. It wasn't there.
Oh, you abstain on that, okay Nick, all right, Cindy abstain for Nick. Got it, thank you Nick. Okay, so moving on to comments from the floor, agenda items only. Marcus, am I the only one seeing this meeting as being recorded?
No, no, everybody should see it and also hopefully you see the attendees. Right now I'm looking to see if anybody has to say, wants to say anything, please raise your hand. And so far I see no hands raised.
I see that there's some, some new names in this list, does everybody, can we just get briefly, if you're on Zoom, can you tell people how to raise their hands?
Sure, on the bottom of the screen, as you use your mouse, on the bottom it'll say raise hand, just click on it and your hands will be raised. And then your mayor will address you.
Okay.
Okay, I think now, I have an iPad, so if you're on an iPad, you click where it says more, the upper right corner where it says more and you get a menu where it says raise hand.
Okay, there you go, yeah, I have a, I have a PC.
Yeah.
And please, if I, if I overlook that, please have someone please mention it to me if I overlook the hand being raised. Thank you. That was a nice, sorry, a nice quiet motorcycle. Okay, and I do. Sorry. Normally you could hear a pin drop on Henry Street, but not tonight. So I, I do, I would like to add something onto the agenda under letter T. We have all of the backup and studies done for the Siemens work performed to date, so I would like to add that onto letter T to discuss the payment of that. Okay, so under new business, since nobody has comments from the floor, A is to consider a motion to open public hearing to amend chapter 21, 211-21 entitled yard screening to the code of the village Buchanan. So can I have a motion to open that public hearing?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this, this, you know, this is something we've discussed, we thought it was on the books where the good side of the fence is facing to the neighbor when in fact, we didn't have that. It was called the good neighbor law. So, but there's something I do want to point out in our fence law and it's under C, it says, just so people understand, you know, when they put up a fence, a drawing of the proposed fence must be submitted to the building department showing the exact location the fence will be located on the property and a building permit must be obtained. Fences are to be limited to four feet in height across the front yard and six feet in height on side in rear yards. Fences to be located anywhere on the property, but this is something we had changed, I think a couple of years ago. The village requires front yard fences to be set back six feet from the curb to allow for snow removal. The village will not be responsible for damage to fences caused by snow plowing and snow removal. So I just wanted to put that out there, I don't know if everybody's aware of that. But the biggest change in this is, is number H. And it says, all fences featuring a rough or unfinished side shall be constructed such that the rough or unfinished side of the fence faces the interior of the property on which, on which the fence is situated. And then also all fences installed before the adoption of this section shall be exempt from the requirements. So basically, this is, this is just like I said, you, to your neighbor, you have to face the good side. If you have a vinyl fence, both sides are good, so this mostly pertains to the wooden fences. Any?
And on the, on the wooden fences, what do we mean, it just says featuring a rough or unfinished side. So like, a lot of fences are pretty much the same on, you know, similar on both sides except that the posts are on one side. So I think, I think the unfinished side is a little, is a little vague, it should be the side that the posts are on maybe. I mean, you know, a lot of fences are just slats and the only thing that distinguishes them is that the support pieces are on one side, not the other.
Right, that would be the backside, so that would be the side that would face the property owner.
I mean, I, I kind of understand what this is meant to say, but I think that you have to be quite literal and clear when you write code. So maybe, maybe we need to also to word that as, the rough or unfinished side, including the structural components, I mean, I, anybody have any other thoughts on the wording there?
I think it's kind of clear Nick, I mean, rough side, people are going to say, which is easy, you know, rough doesn't sound good, whereas the other side is the good side.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, okay, I, I just feel a little like, a little bit like this is over legislating because I don't know that we've had a lot of problems with this. I have a situation when my backyard, I'm facing the library, the library has a continuous arborvitae hedge and if I was to put up a fence, I don't think they would care which side was facing them, you know, so I think there are different circumstances depending on the type of fencing. I'm not bowled over by this legislation, but I see the purpose of it. We, we've had what, one situation where this is a problem? We had a lot of situations or just this one?
I think over the years, there's been different situations.
Okay.
How many?
Well, if I had to go back since the village was incorporated at 19, what was it, 28? I don't have that information, just a second.
About the last five years?
The last five years, I would have to look at, I'd have to speak to the building inspector that's there now and unfortunately, our previous building inspector isn't there. But I think most people were aware that, you know, that's what you should do, I, I always assumed that it was in our village code, so you know, we're just straightening that out with this, with this code, with this change. Is there anyone, is there anyone else on the board that would like to comment on this?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Regardless of how many issues we've had, I think it's the right thing to do to put this in there because it's, it's important. And any exposure to any posts or interior fence should be, should be hidden, should be hidden. I mean, it's just a, it doesn't matter how many times we've had this problem, it's, it's just the right thing to do and it should, it should be in law. It should be part of our, our law. Just feel like any, 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 any neighbor should feel the same way.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, anybody, since the public hearing is open, is there anybody that's with us this evening that would like to comment on that? Please raise your hand.
Mayor, I do not see anybody raising their hand.
And I know, you know, and I know like I said, if you have the, the vinyl fences, it's kind of, it's kind of a mood issue.
Yeah, but anything that has exposed, any exposed, you know, structural, arts component.
Pressure treated posts.
Yeah, any posts that are exposed should be, you know, you should be facing, most fences now are, are pretty much vinyl and everything's concealed anyway, so, but we still do make wood fences, we'll be post exposed.
I understand where I'm coming from with that, I think, I think I could go, would go with this, it's not, it's not a horrible piece of legislation, I could see that if, if anything it could help, it can't, there's nothing that it could hurt, so I, I guess I'll go along with this.
Can I clarify then?
Sure, please.
Is this going to read, shall be constructed such that the rough or unfinished side, including the structural components such as fence posts, shall be constructed? So is that what you want, the language, including the structural components? Okay, added.
Thanks.
Okay.
That would be for the wooden fence, I hate, I hate to prolong this, but the vinyl fence, the, the, the post shows on that.
Yeah, I mean, I just put in 20 feet of what they call a good neighbor fence, which has alternating slats on both sides and the post is down the middle, it showed, so what you see on both sides is exactly the same.
Correct, correct. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on, to amend chapter 21121.
I'll move.
Okay. And, second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Going to read the resolution, whereas motion was approved by the Board of Trustees, the village Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said, said village board at the municipal building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan to hear all interested parties on a proposed local law to amend chapter 21121 yard screening to the code of village Buchanan. And where as notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper and where as said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the village of board on September 7th, 2021 at 7:30 and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas the village board of trustees, the village Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the village Buchanan to adopt said local law. Now be it therefore resolved that the board of trustees, the village Buchanan hereby adopts said local law, number eight, 2021, amending chapter 21121 entitled yard screening to the code of the village Buchanan. Be it further resolved that the village clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the village Buchanan and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of the State of New York. On a motion to approve, to adopt this local law?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you.
Can I add one thing?
We already voted on it, Nick.
There's nothing to do with the vote, just pointing out for residents that the fencing code also includes a contingency that if you are replacing or repairing more than 50% of your fence, even if you have a fence that predates the code and is allowed grant fathered in, so to speak, if you repair or replace more than 50%, then you have to conform to the new code. I just wanted to make that clear to people.
All right, thanks for adding that, Nick. Okay, the next is a resolution, authorize the mayor to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for the Stop DWI Patrol project. This is an agreement that we do, we've been doing it for quite a while. The village would receive $8,400 per year and the chief would, would, you know, set up, you know, and, and work with other police departments, you know, whatever he feels like, you know, is important or where it should be for the DWI program. And this is a five-year agreement, it commences, it commenced it in January of this year and ends on December 31st, 2025, but I'm sure the, you know, sets up a few, few of those DWI, Stop DWI things, I'm sure the 8,000 will go pretty fast. And so the board has received the agreement. So with the board, is there any questions on this? This is something, you know, like I said, we, we've done before. Are we good? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to allow the mayor to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for the Stop DWI Patrol project and at an amount not to exceed $8,400 per year. And the agreement commences January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2025.
I'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next is something we've been discussing for a while. We've been talking about putting a kayak launch over at Lenz Cove. We've spoken to our engineer, George Palmer, and for him to prepare to submit the required documentation to the DEC, it's in the amount of $3,500, so for the scope of work to install it and then plus, there's another fee to of course install the kayak launch. So would the board like to discuss this or would you like me to just put this up for a vote? Because we kind of discussed it and discussed it.
I've discussed it. And the invoice, the price for the kayak dock, which would be a paddle sport dock, kayak canoe, anything non-motorized basically. It's a two boat launch, one which would, at least one would have railings that would enable people with any limited mobility, but that, once they, but that can kayak or canoe, once they're in the boat, people that need a little assistance, the railings would help people get in and out. Basically look like two stair rails on either side of the launch pad, so that would be a, a, a positive thing to have. This would also mean that we can get the current boat dock, which is no longer used and has some exposed rebar and broken up areas, we can get that, some of those dangerous situations removed. And I think that the paddle sports have gotten much more popular over the last 10 or 20 years really, but they're very popular now, you, you go driving down a village street and you know, you look up a driveway and you see, you see a kayak sitting up on the side, I mean, it's not a non-common thing for people to have these days. So I think it'll be a nice addition to the park, a park that's getting more use now than it has, I think ever before largely because of the, the riverfront walkway that terminates there. A lot of people are seeing that park, I just think it was, it would spruce up the park, make it a little bit more, give it a little more vitality and interest. So. But we have discussed it a few times and I certainly am in favor of moving ahead with this.
I don't think we had, there was a lot of enthusiasm for the plan, Nick, I know you're, you'd like the idea and everything, it would be an addition, but in light of the recent decision that we've had of some pending litigation where our insurance company is not going to be covering us for us being sued by somebody that we'll be discussing later on, I don't think we should be taking on any more spending until we get a handle on how much the new lawyers are going to cost us to represent us in this lawsuit.
Well, okay, the spending on this is not coming from general, from the general tax fund, it would come from, there are some specific grant monies and the recreation fund that are set aside specifically for this purpose, we've talked for years, people have said that they think we should use it and now we finally have a way to use it, this would not come out of any tax revenue. The money would come out of the rec fund or out of some grant money.
What grant money do we have to spend on this?
Pardon? What would be the total?
What money are you talking about? Do we get grant money that we can, we can spend on us right now?
I have $100,000 that I've gotten from Entergy, a lot, a large chunk of that will be for the renovation of the circle. So we do have money that we can spend from that grant money there also, and I'll, I'll discuss later what the other, the rest of the $100,000 will go towards, but we could, could take it out of that $100,000 also.
Yeah, so it doesn't impact any tax revenue. The litigation issue is something that goes back, if, what I'm thinking you're talking about is going back 30 years. I mean, it's kind of.
Yeah, well, we just, we just received a letter stating that our insurance company is not going to cover us. So we, we're going to have to take any defense out of our general fund.
But this, this is not coming out of general fund, it would not impact taxation or general fund in any way.
But if, if everybody's not on board with the final product of actually installing this, I don't know if we should do, spend the money to do the research.
Well, it's already been reviewed with the engineer and the highway department who will be able to do the work putting it in. And most of the money, it would be the, all the kayak dock components and then the engineer's fees, the kayak dock components were from the invoice I have from several months ago, I, I hopefully still hold, $12,500, the $3,500 of the, of the engineer's fees. And I don't know that, that we have a clear idea from the highway department. I think they needed to rent a backhoe one day to pull out some of the old concrete and there'd be some, there'd be some work being done by the highway department, I think the cost on that end would be fairly minimal. I don't know, I don't exactly have a number, but Marcus, do you have any insight on that?
Uh, no, we want to know the number for that, but if the board wanted to use the recreation money, the way the mayor stated, if the board wanted to go that, in that direction, that I would suggest that if the approved the 3,500, that, that the money then be appropriated out of the recreation fund, because it's the only way you can take the money out of there, the board has to approve that. So I just want to throw that out there, is that we have to come back into another meeting to discuss it again.
But, but I think it's safe to say we would come from there or it would come from that, the, the grant money that Teresa was talking about and not from the general taxation fund, part of the beauty of it.
And Marcus, we're, if we do do this and if we do install this after we purchase it, all the manpower costs will also come out of that recreation fund or the grant money?
Uh, no, the manpower, the operations would definitely have to come out of the general fund money, that's correct, Sean.
And that's approximately $165 an hour, if I'm not mistaken?
Uh, yeah, yeah, depending on the, on the manpower, what work is going to be done, that's correct.
Yeah, per, per man.
That's correct.
No. And the rental of the backhoe, would that come out of the recreation fund or grant money?
No, that would have to be operational.
No. Greater man hours for this. And the disposal of the debris?
The disposal, any construction cost will come out of the, the, if, if the board agrees, the construction and engineering will come out of the recreation fund, the operational component will have to come out of the general fund.
Okay, thanks.
If people think it's a good thing, if it comes out of the $100,000 grant money from Entergy, that would be something different. Because when we have our Buchanan Day events that are, are highway or whoever's working overtime that day, that money comes out of the grant money that we get from Entergy.
I just don't remember there being a lot of enthusiasm for the installation of this. I don't remember, I remember there being a lot of discussions, I think I was against, there were a couple other people who were against it and if we're not willing to go the full distance with the project, I don't think we should start it.
Well, I, as far as I'm concerned, we're, I'm ready to go the full distance, Marcus, is there, are you sure, or maybe Stephanie, is there no way to, to reimburse the, the rental of a, a backhoe for a day? Concrete dumping and for that matter, even the, even the labor expended cannot be transferred either from the rec fund or from the, the, the grant money that Teresa referred to? That could not be used to, 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 to do a transfer so that it's not coming out of the village's budget at all?
If it's part of the project to construct the kayak launch, any money expended like can become out of the grand of the recreation, but when it comes to operational, the day-to-day operational of the kayak center, taking the docks out or whatever on the annual basis, that's operational.
Well, those are, those are very, that's not a very elaborate process, I don't believe, but the, I'm talking about the, the work done to, to fix the old, to remove the old concrete and to anchor the, you know, it's basically comes as a modular, it comes in a few modules that get assembled in the field. It's not, it's not a huge prolonged project, but obviously it would come, if the highway department is going to do this, it would save us money. So what I'm asking is, is there no way to do a budget transfer from the, from the fund source to the village to come, to cover that?
If it's part, it's part of the overall project to construct, which means remove all the old stuff, put in the new stuff and the labor cost and the rental cost and everything else that goes along with the project, that's part of the project, that can come out of the recreational degree.
Yeah, that's all a mask of marketing, I understand the yearly movement, obviously can't.
Yeah.
But I'm talking about the, the installation of the project, purchase of the equipment, the installation, the modifications, all the DEC requirements, the disposal of the, the debris, all of that, if, if it doesn't have to come out of our budget and it comes out of a different, different revenue stream, that's fine, obviously. Oh, you can't charge to take the dock in and out every year.
Correct. Correct.
So that, that's what I was asking.
Yep. And, and to answer the other question, we won't know that information until the, to the application or the permits put into the DEC. Because that would be a scope of work in regards to what was necessary to remove the docks or move the deck and what's, what the DEC allows us to remove and put back in. So the first step of the board wants to do is to just get the engineering started and then we can get pricing as the engineer progresses and then the board can approve whatever work has to be done after that. But, but if the board wants to move forward with this, I would definitely recommend that you, that part of the approval besides hiring Honda to do the work is where the money's going to come from. So that way you can get all done tonight, if the board wishes to move forward that way.
I think the big question at this point is if the board wants this to happen and if they do, then we have to vote on the $3,500 to approve that, if the board doesn't want it to happen, there's no point in voting on the $3,500.
What is driving this? Is there big community feedback for, for kayak launch? What's, what's the drive?
Um, I've gotten, I've gotten some feedback, some, a couple of emails and I know that there's some, that there were people interested, is if there's anybody that's attending the meeting now that would like to comment, this, this would be a good time. If you have, if you could find the raise hand function on the Zoom screen.
Ms. Kane has her hand on it.
I have two people. I have two people.
Okay, I'm gonna miss Kane first. I'm gonna allow her to speak. Okay, Ms. Kane, you you can unmute yourself or you can speak.
Hi, thank you. Hi, hi, Mayor. Yes, we are definitely in support of it. Um, I think the whole, you know, talk about the revitalization of the waterfront. Is I've seen a lot of, you know, on that topic around, and I think that this would just contribute to it. And I think. Uh, Mr. Zachary pointed out that the continuation of the walking trail there has brought a lot more attention to the park in that area. And I have had, you know, comments from people outside of the village who have said, hey, you know, that would be something that they would be be interested in coming and using. Um, and there was no really talk in that right there about the fact that there would be uh permitting. I mean, this would bring, I mean, I know it wouldn't be a ton of money, but it would be bring money in to charge people to use this. So all in all, I. For us, we thought it sounded like a great idea.
And you you're a village resident and it's something that you would use?
Yes.
Terrific.
All right, thank you, Kathy.
Okay, I'll yes, uh Donna, let me allow her to speak.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hello. Okay, great. Sorry, I'm not used to doing this. Um, I I kind of agree um with the previous speaker. Um, I kayak frequently. I meet people from all over the place, always looking for an access point on the Hudson. Um, and Lenz Cove is rather unsightly where the old boat launches. Um, and downright unsafe if you see people fishing. Um, down there, you know, it's a fall risk if it's gonna need the repairs anyway. Why not invest in something going forward? I mean, Peak Skill has a rental company that rents kayaks out of there. Um, and Echo, uh, is it Echo Point in Croton? They have a um a rental company there, so there's also a possibility to generate money that will make it pay for itself. And I agree, it puts Buchanan on the map because we're right next to the walkway. Um, that's it.
Yeah. And Donna, you're also a resident of the village, aren't you?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Donna, do you have a lot, is there a lot of a desire to enter, you know, from Buchanan area? Is it, is it a, is it? I mean, I I don't really know much about the kayaking and uh I'm just, it's like, I I asked about the drive, where this comes from, because I just want to know what it. What it's about, like, if the community wants it, I I'm all for it. I just, you know, if if there's a big need for it. And there's in in the community is is pushing it, I I it sounds good to me. I just, I just want to know what the desire is like. Is is Lenz Cove a a desired area to to go out and kayak?
Well, well, one thing is that, you know, you get a lot of casual um paddleboard kayak canoe people. Who would go in a sheltered area and from from Lenz Cove, you go out about a thousand feet before you're in the open Hudson.
Yeah.
Because you have the sheltered area from the from Indian, between Indian Point. Um, you know, the property there were juts out and the uh the docks from the boatyards. It's about, you know, so there's a sheltered area. Uh, more experienced kayakers would go, might go out into the current of the Hudson. But a lot of casual people would love a a sheltered area like that, like Ansville, which is a small sheltered area. If you go, if you go over the bridge there towards Antle Circle, you'll see people kayaking there. Again, that's a sheltered area. There are people that are more adventurous. I've seen them from the train out in the middle of the river. I mean, or you can go along the side where in Croton Bay where it's calm, but. It depends on your 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 skill level, your comfort level, but it would definitely provide a. Uh, a a safe and and when and it's a pretty spot there. You know?
I can I can understand that it's that it is a good position, point. However, you know. Our funds, we we try to expend our funds as diligently for village residents. With, you know, having people coming in from outside of the village to use our resources is one thing. But if we, if we're gonna gear this towards people who are coming into the village to use our services. It'd be kind of hard to use the recreation fund because the recreation fund was created by builders who build multifamily homes. Who didn't have recreation areas. And that's why when the phone was set up, it says to acquire and equip new recreation areas. And it's to supplement the the smaller lot size that we have. I'm not so sure we should be expanding our funds to develop something that's going to be used. Primarily by people who are outside.
I think you would get both, and I have trouble with that way of thinking because, look, I live in this area. My wife walks on the Peak School waterfront. I go kayaking down in Croton. I go hiking in Croton Point Park. I also go hiking at Lenz Cove Park. It's, you gotta be, you gotta picture yourself as part of a whole community. You can't be isolationist as a twenty-two-hundred person village. We don't have the resources. We need to use other things in the area and we need to allow other people to use our stuff. You know, it's 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 the people that like that tend to be uh people that, you know, people that do those kinds of things tend to be respectful of the area. They're not, they're not going to be leaving litter. It's, you know, there's out outdoors people tend to be very, have a high consciousness level as far as, you know. Not leaving garbage and things like that. Uh, I think you have to view Buchanan as part of the larger area. People love this area because of access to a wide variety of things, and we just want to be part of that fabric. I have trouble with trying to uh, you know, this isn't Greenwich, Connecticut, where we're gonna exclude people or, you know, from from a private beach. Uh, I think we need to be part of the whole community and public Buchanan residents will use it. And if somebody. Uh, else from, somebody from Peak Skill or Croton or Cortland or Montrose wants to use it. I mean, I don't think we're gonna be getting people coming from Rhode Island and and Pennsylvania to use it, but. It's gonna be the local people that use everything up and down the river.
Well, I I think uh my comment is that I'm, I was kind of, you know, like in in the area of saying, oh, how much is gonna get used? But after listening to Ms. Kane and Ms. Bauer, they brought up a good point about. Uh, you know, fixing up, first off, fixing up an area that is really decrepit right now. That's one thing. A- and also, I was thinking along the lines that. If we attract, if we start to build something that is more attractive. Because really, right now, there's very little down there that is very attractive. That it might, it might start the the ball rolling towards other people's coming and saying, well, why don't we do this or why don't we do that? Because we need to get more participation from people in the village and or even a a, you know, from surrounding communities. And as you're on that committee, Nick, and I I I know that several of the other people on the committee. And you, we don't want to be left out of the thing, so I don't think the cost is that much. And since it would be coming from the funds that 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 Entergy has has left with us. I I I would be forward right as now. I wasn't that much before, but now listening to a couple of people, it's changed my mind.
You know, I I kind of wonder how many people in the village really realize that we're discussing this tonight, too.
Yeah, it needs to be revitalized. I mean, if this is, is this kind of effort is to improve the area, then I'm all for it. It could be temporary until we get a developer to come in there like we're looking to do. And and build what we really want there, but to to revitalize it small for now, I think it's a good idea because. It's 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 an accident waiting to happen down there.
Right.
That concrete needs to be addressed. Um, so, so Nick, you're also saying you could put a canoe on that and and other things?
I mean, I've I've never done paddle boarding. I think they just kind of. Put it in the water and get on it somehow. I but but kayak, you can't, you know, you sort of. Work from shore, you get in it and launch yourself and though, and these just, they'd make it easier to do and for any. I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm I'm seventy-two and I'm in pretty good shape. But I'm I'm like, I look like a very awkward clutch getting in and out of my kayak. Once I'm in, I'm a dolphin, you know? So it gives you a a a, you know. For for anybody, it makes it easier to get in and out. It's, and it encourages people to do it.
All right, sounds good.
All right, I think, you know, and and I've had a few people that are, you know, are aren't on tonight, but they also expressed an interest in their village residents, too. So, um, okay, so we're gonna do, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize James Han Engineering. To prepare and submit required documentation to the D E C in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. As well as create a scope of work to install a kayak launch. On a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Second.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
On a question?
I'm sorry, on a question, I thought we had.
On a question, we should add in there that the money comes from the grant money from Entergy instead of the recreation fund. Because the interpretation is not clear in the legislation, which establishes the recreation.
And the monies will come from the Entergy grant that was that we had gotten. Okay, good.
The recreation fund is pretty clear that the money can be used for um for improvements and and expansion of recreation programs. And specifically says not for maintenance and repairs.
Does improvements? Doesn't say the acquisition and equipping of new recreation facilities?
It doesn't have to be, no, I think it it. You know, what did we use for? Did what did we, do we use some of that for the ball field, was it?
Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, there's this, the acquisition of a new uh of new property. It could be. Uh, basically expansion and, I mean, fine, get it and read it through, but I think it it's specifically says on this anyway, I mean.
No, we didn't vote on it, Anthony. It's on the question.
It's on question now. Sean, do you have any other question?
No, I just, I just would like the money to come out of the grant money like we had previously discussed, but if there are oppositions, if there's opposition to that, you know.
No opposition to that, that's fine. So that, and I'll add on that the grant, the money to to do this will come from the Entergy grant money. So we did on a motion, second, all in favor, I?
I.
Opposed? Okay, pass. Unanimous.
Thank you to the people that commented tonight.
Thank you. So the next is um, we had discussed this before, we had gotten money um. From the federal COVID relief funds and uh two of the suggestions to use that money for was an airlift pump. And manholes. So uh that money that we had got, once again, Marcus, what was it, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the COVID relief funds?
Yes, like a hundred and thirty something.
Okay, so the the purchase of this will come out of that. Um, so, and this is in the um. So we have to approve this so that we can um get this rolling here. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize James Han Engineering to go out to bid for the airlift pump and manholes. And uh on a motion?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
All right, uh, can I just ask a question? Was this discussed at the last workshop?
This was discussed about a month, two months ago.
A a couple of months ago, when we talked about capital projects and stuff like that.
We were talking about putting together the bonds. We had several pumps we wanted to work on.
Yeah, I've kind of, I couldn't quite remember what what these items were. What are the airlift pumps? What are they?
They're for for the wastewater wastewater treatment plants, like a geyser pumps, remember with uh um. Uh, Nick, you were discussing how it was spelled, geyser pumps.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay, okay. Okay.
I thought that would.
Couldn't make a connection. All right, thank you.
Threw you off, right, Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
Coming back to me now. Thank you.
So the next is, we're going to consider a motion to deem the following items surplus, the nineteen ninety-eight fire truck. The nineteen eighty-nine GMC sweeper, the nineteen ninety-seven Chevy pickup, and look at the dates on some of these things. And two Cub Cadet mowers, um, the company that will be um. Auctioning this off is um Auctions International. And I'd like to mention at this time, the new fire truck went into service last evening. So that now is operational, so this is uh the nineteen ninety-eight fire truck is definitely surplus now. So, on a motion to.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
I.
I.
So the next, this is pretty standard, a motion to extend seasonal highway help as follows. Matt Eichler extended until September third. And Peter O'Neil extended until September seventeenth. Um, so on a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, so the next is a motion to appoint two people, and we do this every year. We have seasonal, we have seasonal summer help, we have seasonal fall help. So with the lea- the help with the leaves. So um to make a motion to appoint uh two people as seasonal highway help. At a rate of fourteen dollars per hour, Matt Eichler from October fourth to December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. And Peter O'Neil from October eighteenth to December third, twenty-twenty-one. On a motion?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Okay, the next, um, we had received a complaint um about the sidewalk outside of Fat Sal's. Um, the engineer uh was in the village last week. He had looked at that and the road work that we're gonna be doing. And uh the highway department put a temporary patch in. So what's happening is this, our sidewalk outside seems to have dropped. So there was a pretty, pretty much of a big lip going into Fat Sal, so it is our sidewalk. Um, and the cost, the cost to do that is is six thousand dollars, which the money will be coming out of our contingency fund to do that. So on a motion to authorize the repair of the sidewalk located at two sixty-three, two sixty-five Tate Avenue. And to approve a change order for Consorti Brothers paving and seal coating in the amount of six thousand and to authorize the transfer from contingency. Zero zero one dash nineteen ninety dash four six zero to sidewalks, zero zero one five four one zero four six zero. In the amount, once again, of six thousand dollars. So on a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On a question?
Yeah, how big, how long a piece of sidewalk is there?
How many feet would you say that is, Marcus?
Oh, it has to be uh to be, no, probably twenty, it's the entire length um of the sidewalk in front of Fat Sal's. So it's the entire length. If you drive by, you'll see it. It's all the way across the entire front. It is actually has sunken down.
Okay, both and they have two entrances in both entrances have that that big lip.
That's correct.
Is the, does the curb have to get redone or are we just bringing the sidewalk up to the existing curb?
We're just replacing the sidewalk. The curb was fine.
Okay.
Correct.
Because the sidewalk uh sunk in and the curb stayed pretty good.
That's correct.
Is good, okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, the sidewalk repair, I mean, obviously, has this, has this been uh happened quickly? Or did it happen over time? Do, is there, is there an issue under the sidewalk, drainage, sewer leak, a water leak? Or something that's making the sidewalk before we spent six thousand dollars on it? Have we looked into this, investigated it a little bit more than just patching it?
I think, I, well, it's gonna be completely taken out, but I I think, you know, we did a temporary patch last week because it was a safety issue. But I think until they dig that sidewalk up, we, yeah, we won't know. And I I thought that was kind of strange that that sidewalk just suddenly, it wasn't sudden. I don't know how long, because I, you know, we were just notified like a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yeah.
You could have a sewer leak, a water leak, you could have something under there that's that's eroding the sub sub base. So I mean, you know, you open up that sidewalk, you could be opening up a can of worms. So I I just, you know.
Yeah, at a at a minimum, it's gonna have to be, uh, you know, the the the. The base, the gravel, whatever you call that material they put underneath, they're gonna have to do a lot of compacting and, you know. They're gonna, they're gonna have to treat it as though that is as though it had given a little bit. Uh, I and I guess once they pull it up, if there's some major issue, it'll be apparent, hopefully.
That's why the timing is important, because if it happens suddenly, then there is an issue.
Yeah, right.
I'll I'll have to, uh, Marcus, if you could speak to the owner tomorrow and ask them how long that's been like that? Was it a sudden thing or? You know, the issue is, it's our sidewalk, and if somebody gets hurt, it's a liability to us at this point, but I I do understand.
But I don't want to open it up and and have, uh, you know, is the six thousand turns into thirty-six thousand? Because you're repairing the sewer line and and you're ripping up curb, you're going out into the street to tie into the sewer. I mean, it could be just about anything.
Well, another thing is it dropped.
And Anthony, what's what's the alter, what's the alternative? I mean, you're in the business kind of.
Well, the alternative, you you have to dig it out. You have to dig a test pit, so it has to be opened anyway, regardless. But I didn't know if the engineer looked into it any deeper, like if it was just, I'm just looking for a timeframe of the drop.
Right.
Quick. And was it sudden uh change in the elevation?
Problem could be the uh, it could be a problem under Fat Sal's and then it's not the village's problem.
Yeah, that's right. No, it could be that.
That's a good point, and I think we need to point this out to them before we start work, because if you look at that sidewalk, then there's like, they have, it's like a. Because if you look at that sidewalk, then there's like, they have, it's like a retaining wall and the steps down into their entry area. So that if their retaining area where where it goes down, where they have a couple of tables, if that, if their retaining wall has is 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 giving in any way, that could be why the the sidewalk portion you know, receded a bit. So we have to, we might need to, before we begin work, examine there the wall that forms their their front pit, we go down the stairs into the entry area and make sure that that's intact. If there's any sign of cracking or or giving in that in that, then then, you know, we need to, we need to come up with a solution, because that could fall on them and you know, we if we, you know, might, we don't want to have a situation sort of like, you know, you you drop something in the store, you got to pay for it, you know? You broke it, you you pay for it. If we start compacting that sidewalk and then their wall gives, who's that on? So we we might need to look at that first.
All right, well, I know the.
Good point, Anthony, good starting that conversation there.
Thanks.
There's a reason it dropped. Okay, so now that we've had that conversation, I forgot where we left off. Was on a motion, second on a question, that's where we left off?
Yeah.
Yep.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
I, I mean.
Marcus, please.
Yes, yes, no problem, I'll take care of it.
And if you get a chance, maybe walk down and look at the wall itself. I I was there, I don't remember seeing a problem with the wall, but then again, I'm not an engineer, so.
Yeah, I walked on their side, I didn't see anything, but I'll take a closer look.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that wall could not, may maybe not draining properly, and any construction they have done could be the cause of this this problem.
That could be it too. Yeah, we'll take a look at that. Thanks, Anthony.
Okay, this is something we've discussed before. Everyone realizes that the sale of cannabis is going to be allowed. So I'd like to schedule a public hearing for the October 5th, 2021 meeting on the sale of cannabis within the village.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
On a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, on a question, go ahead.
I know a few months back, we had discussed this at a couple of meetings. And we we had a course of action, I was wondering, what's what occurred to bring it back up to reevaluate the situation?
You know, I I I think people have heard about what's going on and they wanted to comment on that. So I just thought it was appropriate to have a public hearing so that people could comment.
So we had members on a public, I requested a public hearing or?
Yes, they wanted to be heard.
Okay.
They wanted to be heard, so we'll we'll do that.
Is the, okay, so if it's a public hearing, that usually means there's a piece of legislation or or a proposal. Do we, and do we have that?
We have to opt in or opt out?
No, we don't have to opt out.
You don't have to opt out. Okay, you're right.
So what is a public hearing? Is this just a public comment or is it a hearing?
It's it's a public hearing so that people can express their thoughts and and concerns or for for pro, for con. I I think we should, we should hear from the public and then also, you know, if the board decides this is something they would like to see in the village for whatever reasons, I I think there has to be, so I'd like to talk about this at the workshop a little bit. You know, what the requirements, you know, would it be X amount of feet from a school perhaps? Would you like to have the lounge? Would you not like to have the lounge? You know what I mean? So there's perimeters to to this, so. That's all.
Okay.
That's all. Okay, so we'll discuss it at the workshop a little bit more. Well, Marcus, if you could please get everyone a copy of the New York State law so that we can go from that with the discussion.
Sure. I have a question, Teresa. So normally, when you're going to have a public hearing, I advertise that.
Oh, yes.
Is that what you'd like me to do?
Yes, could you please? Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we just.
There's no specific resolution.
Nope.
Right now. So what, I mean, normally when we advertise a public hearing, it's it's to respond to a specific resolution or proposed legislation. So.
I don't think it has to be, you know, just to that, I think, I think, Nick, I I think what it is is that, you know, given that there's a lot of controversy about it and a lot of people want to be able to 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 say what they what they feel about the sale of or whatever about marijuana. It's it's a hot button issue, so I I think we, you know, we don't have to have a law ready to go, go ready to go. We just want to hear, and you know what? If we have a public hearing and like, you know, two people make a comment, then we know that we let the people in the village have their say, and if they don't want to sit that they evidently then don't care about which way, so we could take it from there.
Okay.
And I think, Nick, also, this is a little bit different, because if you don't opt out, you're in, and people might not understand.
Right.
You know, it's not like we can have a public hearing to opt in or out, you only need one if you're going to opt.
Right.
So I think you're just giving people a chance to be heard.
Would have to be to opt out, and then the board could be planning to vote against it, against opting out. If we need a piece of legislation to to advertise for the meeting, that could be the legislation and the board, no.
No, you don't need legislation to opt out, you just don't have legisla.
Well, we could have a piece of legislation to opt out and then vote against opting out.
Okay, but we don't have that ready, because I didn't prepare it and and you do, before you call for a public hearing, you have to have it, so.
Because a hearing.
We had a couple of months ago.
A hearing implies more than just getting comments from the public.
I think it's appropriate we hear from the community on this issue.
No, I I agree, I just don't know what they, it doesn't, it's not a normal procedure for a public hearing. It's just a, we'll be discussing it at the workshop and you and we'd like your input.
Let's just call it a public discussion then.
I'll look discussion.
There we go.
Public comment, public discussion.
Yeah.
Public input.
Okay, so what do you want me to call it?
All of the above.
Let's call it a public hearing. And we'll we'll develop the legislation afterward.
Yeah, we could discuss it more at the workshop too. Okay, so did we vote on this? Because we get into these, it was on a on a question. I think we left, right? So all in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, so this is something we've discussed before. Consider motion to pay MJM Productions a fee of $450 for filming board meetings. Mike Mine has been with us for over 20 years, hasn't raised his prices in many, many years. He will now be filming our, well, he has been filming our board meetings, so the fee will be $450. So on a motion to improve, approve the payment to MJM Productions for filming board meetings.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
On a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, well, I always forget on a question.
Well, you know, we had, we had discussed this at the last couple of meetings because we were having public meetings. And also, we had eliminated the the videography of the planning and zoning board meetings because we were had gone live too. So the legislation that Stephanie sent out said that we we have to broadcast the public meetings as well as transcribe them. So will this cost, will we now be going back to having the planning and zoning boards recorded and and aired also? And will that, as well as the, as well as the workshop meetings?
I know, when we get into this, you know, now that we're back to Zoom for now, we're going to see how things go. I know this law is till January, but I'm kind of hoping, you know, things calm down a little bit so we can go back to in-person meetings. But Stephanie, could you answer Sean's question on that? Do would would that law cover also filming the planning and the zoning boards also?
Yes, yep, people have to, you don't, you don't necessarily have to film it, people have to be able to participate. So Zoom, filming, whichever way you want to do it. But Sean's right, you have to advertise it, they have to be given an opportunity to be heard like tonight, when they can raise their hands. And the law is really clear on transcribing. And I think, Marcus, I talked to you about this when it first began, and I think you said there's a Zoom. Zoom can keep transcripts or does keep transcripts in case you need them in the future, if anybody ever, you know, foiled it or wanted it.
Correct, correct, there's a third party application, I think the Zoom video and transcribes it, that's correct.
And they're being kept, these videos?
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
Well, they they have to be transcribed with somebody like Stephanie says can foil, so if somebody can come down and foil next this month's meeting, they should, it has to be available, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yes, yep.
And all the videos, all these videos will be on our website as well, like the way we were before.
Yeah, and also, I I believe that the law that was passed that runs until January 15th of 2022 makes it optional to have meetings this way, it's not a requirement, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Sean saw, so you know, I did make that decision in, because there was an uptick, just, I'm glad you brought that up. There was an uptick in August, we had 19 positive cases here in the village, so we were seeing a pretty substantial uptick, July, there were only four positive. So that's why, you know, with this meeting, you know, just for the safety of everyone, you know, I I made the decision to put it back on Zoom. I'm kind of hoping I'm going to monitor this month where we are with everything. Hopefully, October, because we have the public hearing on the marijuana, I'm kind of hoping that we're back in person, if we're not back in person there, it it upticks, maybe we could do at the pavilion if it's not too chilly. So for this evening, because of where we were with everything going on with the upticks, I figured just, you know, and and we've we've had, of course, a few of our our board members who have contacted COVID, so I just, you know, wanted to keep everybody safe, so.
Can I, a couple of things, the July 27th workshop, the video options we discussed were 350, which did not include a live stream for the for regular meetings, 350 per meeting. The 450 now, is it, does it include a live stream? Or still, we're still just relying on on people going to the Zoom link?
And Nick, you missed the last workshop, there was something, after we discussed those options, Mike Miner came back and said that the 350, he hasn't increased the fees in years and his fee has to be 450 or it's not financially feasible for him to continue. So the 450 will be his basic fee to continue to continue filming the meetings with Zoom or or live.
Okay, so then for people to to follow the meetings, they have to go to the Zoom link on our website.
That's correct.
Okay, so in that case, I'd like to complain about our new website. It used to be first thing you saw when you got on the front page. Now, in order to get to a meeting, you've got to go to the website, then you've got to click on government, then you've got to click on Board of Trustees, then you've got to click on agendas, and then you've got to click on the date of the meeting. Can we, if if people, if we're going to be relying on people finding the Zoom link, can we put something right on the first page for the meeting so that it's right there? I think, I think it's kind of, the the new website looks better, but I don't think it works better. And, you know, I kind of commented on that when it first came about, but but specifically for finding the Zoom link, you've got to go through five steps. And I think we need to get it right on the homepage, you open the village if you can a website, and right there, there's got to be something that says, you know, tonight's meeting Zoom link or something.
Absolutely, I wholeheartedly agree with you, Nick.
Could you, could you look into that, Marcus?
So I thought I talked to web designer, see if we could fix that, but just to let everybody know too, anybody who's signed up for either Face, a Facebook post or email blast, the link is right there as well. So if people are registered, they'll get that information, but I'll talk to the web designer, see if we give them something right on the homepage as well.
So Marcus, I know you mentioned that last month when I asked that same question. What are the percentage of residents that have signed up for those two avenues to be notified of the meetings?
I don't know the exact number, but I keep on, it's on every newsletter to let people know that they can register to get email, to get emails about all the meetings. But definitely, if the number is not as high as I would like it to be.
How many people, just around about how many people, you don't got to give me a percentage, how many people?
I don't know, I have to look up how many have signed up. I can use the number.
I don't use Facebook, but I I mean, I I go on the page and and it tells you how many people are following, I think it's in, is it like 5, 600 or something?
Well, it's 2,300 residents, so if only 500 people have signed up, they're the only people getting notifications.
Right, right, and here's another point, that over the years, I think the most, the people most likely to watch our meetings are seniors. And I can tell you, there's probably a pretty small percentage of seniors that are using Facebook and Zoom to watch our meetings. So we're kind of leaving out a whole segment here by not having like a live stream on the public access channel or something. So if we're interested in reaching the most.
It's posted to our our channel also. Our village access channel, which isn't like.
But the meeting's not there.
Well, yeah, our meeting, it gets posted.
The meeting is live on the public access.
Well, not on live, it not live, but the next day it it gets uploaded.
They can watch it, okay, so they can't watch it live, but they can, but the next day they can watch it, okay. Well, that's something.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so what was I going to say? I think the only other thing we had it to do, Sean, was on a question, all in favor?
I.
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 So now the next one is we're, someone has requested the use of Lenzco parking lot for overflow parking for September 11th event at the factory contingent on proper insurance. So I know Marcus has been involved with our broker. Marcus, would you like to give us an update of where this is at this time?
Sure, it looks like we're making some progress, I just got updated information today to the insurance broker. He had additional questions in regards to additional coverages. So hopefully, if you guys, if the board is willing to approve it contingent to having the proper insurance, I think we'll continue working with the individual to get the proper insurance to allow them to use the parking lot. But as long as they provide the proper insurance, that's where we are right now.
Okay.
What is the event, by the way?
Nash Kill, Nash, it's not Nashville, I think it's Nash Kill.
Nash Kill, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a music event?
A bunch of music event, yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's not a, is it, is it a September 11th memorial event or just happens to be on September 11th?
Just happens to be on September 11th.
Okay.
Okay, so on a motion to authorize the use of Lenzco parking lot for overflow overflow parking for September 11th event, contingent on proper insurance, contingent on the village receiving the proper proper insurance.
So moved.
Second, on a question? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? No, okay.
Oh, sorry, Rich, move your camera down a little bit so we can see you better.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
So the next is we had some residents put in an application to use the pavilion for a fundraiser for a local person who is has some medical issues. So I'd like to consider a motion to waive the fee and allow alcohol that at the September 18th, 2021 fundraiser for Walter Estraski at the pavilion, and Marcus, we have received the proper insurance for that.
That's correct, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
On a motion.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, on a motion to waive the fee and allow alcohol at the September 18th, 2021 fundraiser.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On a question?
Yeah, I I know I had discussed this once before, is there a part of our code that requires a resolution for the sale of alcohol? I know to use the use the facility, but I don't ever remember any part of our code that says it's required to be specifically stated, if you need board approval for the sale of alcohol. It's just a check mark on the on the.
Yeah, Shane, I think the police chief defined it, I haven't pulled it out and emailed the whole board, I think they're finding one in the meetings before.
Yeah, and I think it's a policy that we have to just make sure that we have the proper insurance if alcohol is going to be involved, you know, to protect the village.
I would presume that the insurance company would charge the person more if they know that there's alcohol involved.
They do, and that's one of the reasons why it's a check mark on on the application, and it's for those types of verifications. I just didn't know that there was an actual part of our code that's that codifies the somebody giving alcohol. You know, I I I'm sure you need the permits if you're going to sell it, but not to give it, you know, so.
And Marcus, Marcus, you said there is?
Yeah, I think Sean, I think the police chief did find something in the code, but I I forgot where it was, but I asked him to pull it out tomorrow.
Yeah, just email me the the code number, okay?
No problem.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I, I'd have to look it up, but I do remember there being some specific wording at the village in the code that says the village board can, um, allow the use of alcohol that we have, and when we've done it in the past, we've done it by a motion, not by resolution. Um, you know, or as part of the, uh, pavilion use paperwork, we've never had a separate resolution for it.
Well, yeah, it's under open containers. I was just looked at a forty-five dash one.
Okay, that makes sense.
Uh, so it's in there, it's, it's totally illegal unless by, uh, any general specific permit issued by any agency authorized to do so. So, uh, we assume that has to be the village board.
Thanks.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Marcus. Um, and so, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 No one. Okay, the next is a motion to modify the street opening permits as recommended. Um, George Palmer looked into that. Um, so I, I'm going to read his memo. Based on the recent gas main work along Blakely Avenue and Broadway, the village should review and revise the fees associated with road opening permits. Currently, the minimum fee for the typo is commercial. It's for all, all, it's for commercial and residential, is three hundred dollars, which the village should consider increasing to three fifty. This amount should include work up to a hundred linear feet of roadwork. Projects requiring more than a hundred linear feet of disturbance should include a fee of three fifty per linear feet for the total length of disturbance. This is based on the seven thousand dollar invoice, um, for the work on Broadway and Blakely that he, that he did when, um, Con Ed opened up those roads. So, um, that's what our engineer is recommending, um, that we do to change that.
At three hundred, at three fifty per linear foot, seven thousand dollar invoice, does that mean it was two hundred, two hundred feet of, uh, road frontage? Cause three dollars and fifty cents times two hundred is seven thousand. Was that two thousand feet of, was that, uh, two hundred feet of road frontage?
I don't have that exact number.
I don't, it was, it was all, it was mostly all, all, all of Blakely and then, and.
Oh, then it was easily two hundred.
And, and Broadway.
Okay, then it was, yeah, oh, the work that they were doing there last year, that, that was easily two hundred feet, okay.
More than two hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, more than, yeah.
Okay. So, um, we're going to do a motion to modify the street opening permit as recommended by our village engineer. Um, and we're gonna change the three hundred fee to three fifty, if that's all right with the board. And, um.
We gotta make a motion to.
Yep, and, and, and on a motion to do that?
Go on.
And, and then, uh, above a hundred feet, three fifty per linear feet.
Correct.
As per George's, uh, the engineer's, uh, recommendations, yeah. I, I, I agree with them.
Okay. Okay, so on a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
On a question?
Aye.
I was gonna get to that after the.
Okay, so last month when we discussed this, uh, the question that I had was for the commercial work, I didn't receive a second memo from George. He, George sent out a second memo with that correction because one of the questions I had asked was whether we can, uh, charge residential different than commercial. So, you, you got a memo from George stating that we had to change it, or?
No, it was just George saying that, that he had a typo, and I don't know, uh, Stephanie, could you comment on that? Can we charge separate for, uh, residential, commercial? Would you?
You know, the test is always, is there a rational basis for distinguishing between them, right? So if the street opening is no different, it's not wider, it's not more intense, it's not more expensive for commercial versus residential, then it should be the same, in.
Well, the, the, the test would be that residential street opening permits are usually small in size, usually for one use, maybe a, a three-quarter inch water line and a gas line. The resident, the, uh, commercial are the industrial sized projects like we're seeing affect us right now, which are the installation of utilities. So, they have a higher value associated with them because they endure greater inspection criteria. So, that would be the, the line of delineation that I would use. Uh, as I had stated at the last meeting, I didn't have a problem with just bringing up the road opening fees to three fifty, but since the commercials were the ones that are, uh, basically causing the biggest impact to our residents and to our tax base on the inspection criteria, I wanted to move the linear footage up to sixty, uh, six dollars per linear foot. And, uh, Marcus had said that's a little bit high, but, uh, they, they use up a lot of our resources. And that's, those were the questions that I had last month, uh, and wanted to try and change, just.
Yeah, uh, and Sean, just to answer that question a little bit is, um, and Stephanie, we, we, I can agree with me. The fee should be equal to what the service is being provided, so that's why, um, that's why George's comment will cover the cost of everything was done by Con Edison. So my concern, you go to six dollars a square foot, Con Edison might ask, where's your backup for that? Uh, and we're doubling the fee, there might be an issue with the fee being charged higher than what the George Palmer recommended based on his services. So, that was my only concern.
Okay, but I think the bottom line is we wanna cover the, on Ed, we'd incur their engineer, um, with whatever road openings they decide to do. Hopefully, they're done, but who knows?
Can I make a comment? I think in, for, for most commercial properties in the village and residential, it's not gonna matter, uh, in terms of the impact of opening roads, whether it's, um, you know, fat cells, gallon measure, my house, Anthony's house, if one of us has to open up the street because we wanna get the gas service running, or, or we have to do a new line or something, it's gonna be a, you know, it's probably gonna be like a, a five by ten hole in the street. The issue is really, when, as you said, Sean, when it's utilities. And I don't think any house is ever gonna have to dig up a hundred feet of road, nor is fat cells or gallon measure if they have to redo a gas line or a water line. So maybe what we do is have that three dot, three hundred dollars or three hundred fifty cover a smaller, up to twenty-five linear feet. Because it's only on those larger commercial projects and utility runs where, um, you're gonna be getting anything other than a small hole. So maybe we go up to twenty-five, and then anything above twenty-five feet, we assign a dollar value. And, uh, if it's justifiable, I wouldn't mind, uh, going a little higher than the three fifty, as Sean suggested. I don't know what the magic number is, but I think for normal road openings, you're talking about a small area and, and the hundred linear feet um, is not gonna apply to, like, emergen, most emergency repairs or adding up a gas service, or, you know.
That sounds good to me, you know, that isn't just Con Edison that this is affected. Uh, when Lafarge, at the time, increased their production, they dug up the road to install a larger water main.
Right.
And, uh, Con Edison also put in, uh, a new, uh, trans, transformers down on the ground, they dug up the road to install cables and it left it, uh, basically uninhabitable for six months during the entire winter time, caused several car accidents. So, I don't have a, I don't, definitely don't have a, a problem with going down to twenty-five linear feet, would, sounds good, and, but let's go to four linear.
I mean, most, most, yeah, most of the holes are like one or two steel plates to cover them. As, so this way we'd be, we'd get more out of the larger, uh, commercial projects, uh, by, by starting at twenty-five, after twenty-five feet with the per foot charge.
Anthony, what do you think?
I think you ought to gauge that on the widest road you have in the village. Because you could get up to forty feet to cross the street, to tie into a sewer, to tie into a, a gas main, to tie into water, just make it at a forty foot minim, uh, minimal. I mean, you, you, just, because a, a commercial, like you said, Nick, commercial, residential, it's gonna be the same, same effect on the roadway. You know, it doesn't matter if the tying gas in, water in, sewer, it doesn't matter. But, I, I mean, the widest street, you could be twenty-five, thirty feet across, complete crossing, so you wanna go a little more than twenty-five feet, you know, a, and, uh, but your, your lateral runs, you know, perpendicular to the curb line, that's, that's what you guys are referring to.
Yeah, and, and I, I see your point because.
When they take a lane out of the road to run a utility lane, that's, it's a whole different animal. You know, then.
Yeah, okay, cause I, I was thinking, I wasn't thinking, but the, the gas main might be on one side of the road. So if I, I might only have to dig up eight feet, whereas the, my neighbor across the street might have to dig up.
Yeah, no, they're gonna have to dig feet crossing.
Good point.
All right, a little bit more than twenty-five feet then.
Feet to the center line, so you wanna complete the street. But, but even, but even with your analogy, Anthony, even if you had to go ten extra feet, it's forty dollars.
Yeah.
You know, so if you had to go thirty-five feet, it'd be three hundred and, and, uh, ninety dollars instead of three hundred and fifty dollars. We're looking for the, the habitual offenders, which are the, the utility companies.
Yep.
Oh.
I, I don't think you wanna take this out on the homeowners tying into a gas main, you think you wanna take it, you wanna do, it's mostly commercial.
Yeah.
You know, but anyway, gas mains, it's, Con Ed's gonna open a street anyway to do that, but you, you don't wanna take it out on tying in for water or sewer.
Yeah, but Sean's point is right, if it's another ten feet, it's only another thirty-five bucks.
Well, in, in, in the, in the literature, I would say, just, you know, minimize it to forty feet, or what, even, even if it is only ten dollars. This way it shows it.
All right, go to forty linear feet per road and four dollars per linear foot over to forty feet, how's that?
Fantastic.
Four dollars, I got four dollars, can I get five?
Okay, so we're, we're not gonna go according to our engineer's recommendations, but this is what the board would like to do, okay?
I, I think.
You know, the board can vote on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think George will like that idea of that, uh, lower footage.
Okay, now I have to reword this. Okay, so, I would like to make a motion now to, um, consider increasing to three hundred and fifty dollars for the road opening permit. And the amount should include work up to forty linear feet. And, um, the projects that require more than a hundred linear feet of disturbance should include a fee of four dollars per linear foot for.
Projects requiring more than forty feet.
Right. Forty, I'm sorry.
Said, yeah.
We're changing the hundred to forty.
Okay, forty feet. And, um, requiring more than a hundred linear feet of disturbance should include a fee of four dollars per linear feet for the total length of disturbance.
Now, do we hold a, uh, do we hold a retainer for all that work? I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
With a bond.
You have a bond for all that work?
He's talking about escrow, does Con Edison take out an escrow?
No.
No. Utilities don't take out the escrow, but if I'm not mistaken, residential applicants do. Is that correct, Marcus?
Residential and commercial, I, I just was wondering.
Yeah, so, uh, in our, uh, and a residential house, or anybody else would just, would just be paid, pay the fee and that's it.
And the criteria work to, to restore the road is, we don't hold them accountable for that?
Um, yes, that, they pay the fee, uh, if any additional work has to be done, the engineer would go back to that homeowner or property owner to restore the road if, if it sinks over time.
Well, that's why we have bonds, that's why we should have a bond. We've had bonds for the road opening. Well, that's something, you know, Marcus, can, can we, can we look at that, just to verify that? I think that's important.
Well, wha- what about, you know, we should, we've changed our code so that if anybody has to dig up the street like Con Ed did, uh, they're required to pave back to the center line, not just leave us with that long patch.
Right.
Uh, is that applied to residential too?
No.
No, just a patch.
All right, and this will also apply to new construction, if somebody's putting in something new and they have to, you know, run new lines, but, you know, you spend a half million dollars to build a new building and, uh, you know, this is gonna add about eight hundred bucks to your costs. You know, even if you have to dig up a hundred feet. Not a huge amount of money for a major project.
Yeah, well, Con Ed's gonna pick up their gas, gas excavation. You know, and, and, uh, you know, their water and sewer, we have to pick up somehow. So.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but I like, I like those adjustments, the forty and the four dollars. Forty.
So, I, I did all that, I read that out on a motion, all, all, um, okay, so, on a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? No, okay. We'll move on to the next. Um, okay, so the next is, um, you know, we've been talking to Bell Engineering, um, about the waiting pool at, at the, uh, pavilion, not at the pavilion, but at the pool there. And, um, Nancy's not with us this evening, but she can come to the next meeting. But, um, she had said that it's important for the camp that the waiting pool, um, is, is repaired and up and running again. And Marcus, um, everyone has a copy of Bell Engineering here?
I have.
Okay, because the, the, the cost of doing this is, is really, it's gonna be around a hundred thousand. So, the, uh, Bell Engineering is the one that would be doing all of the, I mean, it lists what they're gonna do, this, the geometric study, preliminary design, final design, um, working with us with the bidding process, and then also dealing with the Westchester County Department of Health. And their fee comes to approximately fifteen thousand. So this is.
Question, uh, mayor, it's, waiting pool, you're talking about that small round pool for like little toddlers?
Yes.
We told them about spending a hundred thousand dollars for that? Boy, that's a lot of money. I don't know how much use that gets, does it?
I, I, Nancy says, you know, for the camp it does. I know, I know it's a lot of money, I, I.
What age, how low of an age does a camp go?
I don't remember, I don't know off the top of my.
I mean, a six-year, I, I would imagine it's not lower than six, and a six-year-old's not gonna use a waiting, they wanna go to the swimming pool. I don't know, I, I mean, I, I got a concern about the necessity of this.
Okay.
Waiting pool could probably, the waiting pool, if I remember correctly, only fit maybe three people, not four people. And it's only about a foot and a half deep, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's like ten, ten feet in diameter.
Yeah, and this is not a splash pad, so this is like a little waiting pool.
Yeah, and when we discussed it, it turned out that doing a, just doing like a sprinkler thing was gonna cost even more for some bizarre, bizarre reason.
Yeah.
I, I think it's insane price, a hundred thousand dollars for a little round pool?
Yeah, for fifty thousand, Rich will stand there with a hose and hose people down.
What is, what is?
Price, yeah.
What does everybody think about this? What are your thoughts? I mean, we can, we can table this until we speak to.
Well, is there, wait, is there, you know, is there a chance this, if you can get, that there's grant money for this?
There is grant, that's available, that will pay for the hundred thousand, but not the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, we still gotta come out of pocket for the fifteen grand.
Right.
So, I mean, if you're gonna do the fifteen grand, you might as well do the hundred.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of, I think we really need to research this a little bit more.
Well, does this include keeping the existing structure and just redoing all the filtration and pumping and everything? Or is this a new structure?
No, this is just to meet the, create a new filter, uh, filtering system and separate from the larger pool.
Because remember, we had the problem with the leak.
Yeah.
Was the pools.
I just wanna be clear, it doesn't have any, it's nothing to do with the structure, it's ju, and the structure is fine. It just needs, uh, new pumps and filtration and whatever.
It says, design new waiting pool, including skimmers, main drains, new filtration system, and surrounding concrete deck.
Uh, Marcus, we, we need an engineering firm for this, the, because a lot of pool, pool design companies have their own engineering firms. Uh, if we went out to bid with this, they could bring in somebody in themselves.
Uh, yeah, but.
Pool contractor, you mean?
But some, yeah, but someone had, the idea is to have somebody, somebody have to do a scope of work to do this.
I get it, but they can't, their, their own personal engineers can't do the scope?
Uh, I've never gone out, unless you're gonna give them the, the job at the end of the day, I don't know how that will work, to be honest with you. But, but I say, we go into, if we go into the preliminary design, for example, and we se- submit this to the Department of Health, and let's say, the, the work is three hundred thousand dollars, the board can just kill the project at that point and not move any further.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
What do you think, mayor?
I think honestly, with the questions that have come up, um, I think we need to table this until we have more information.
All right, I think if we spend a hundred.
Use of this, this pool, I mean, I've got to the pool a lot in August, and it's, it's very few people.
Yeah.
And, and to pay, and, and we're not guaranteed with a, a, a grant for this. And we still spending fifteen thousand upfront for something that I really, I, I can't believe, I don't think you can have a camp person that's gonna be less than, uh, five or six years old. And five or six olds are not using that, that kind of a, uh, uh, it's a baby pool.
May I, may I suggest, may I suggest this to the board, since there's no voting meeting until October, and Nancy is gonna be here for the workshop, uh, and Nancy is going to be here for the workshop, uh, in September. Um, if the board's willing to agree to this at this meeting, subject to the discussion you're going to have with Nancy to tell how many children's being affected by it and stuff like that, and then we, I can just not approve anything. And but at least, at least we're ready to go with this in case the board wants to move forward, or unless you want to wait to October. The concern is, talking to Bell, it takes the Westchester County Department of Health months and months to review any kind of application. So it might, this might, this might delay the whole process to another year, and then Nancy can explain what the effects are. So I just want out there, just to move this forward since you only meet once a month, and then listen to Nancy in September.
The only problem, it's a very short span of time. Our next board, our next workshop is September twenty-eighth, and then the meeting is that next Tuesday, I believe.
Yep, so we just, we just delayed this another month if that, you know, the board wants to get more information.
Question is to find out what the, what the age group, do we accept children in the camp under five?
I don't think so, no.
I, I, I'm not sure either. All I know is from Nancy saying is that, that she has to spend more, more money on counselors to review the younger kids going into the pool, because the pool is deeper, so therefore there's more staff she needs to hire for those children. That's my understanding.
Spend a hundred thousand dollars on a starting five kid going in the ring.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what, that she has to give you, I asked her to provide you guys with that analysis and the numbers.
Okay, so we're, we're not ready to vote on this.
All right, that's fine.
So we're going to.
Has the waiting pool been open the last couple of years?
Last year, uh, last year, no.
And this year was open?
This year, no, we shut it down to keep the big pool open.
So it hasn't been open for a couple of years?
Two years.
Yeah. I mean, I remember when my son was little, taking him over there, and I could picture, you know, lots of kids running around in that waiting pool. But I'm talking about twenty years ago. I don't know what kind of use it was getting when it was still open. Uh, so, um, you know, I'd like to get some other input, maybe, and hear from Nancy. Next workshop, is that what we're saying?
Yep, we're going to discuss it at that. We're also going to discuss at the workshop, okay?
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, um, so a motion to renew the planning consultant, Hardisty and Hanover for the same hourly rate for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Uh, there's no increase in their fee. Um, and there just was, uh, just somehow got away from us here, so, um, and we're going to have, everyone got the printout on that, also, um, the services that they will provide, their fees, et cetera, et cetera. So same as, same as we've, we've had. So on a motion to, um, to, to renew the planning consultant.
Make a motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, and a question.
Yeah, what, could you just explain again what these, what these people are doing first?
This is our planning. So at one time for the, oh gosh, I can't think of the company that we used to have.
F P Clark.
F P Clark for years. So these are our planners. So they come to our planning board meetings, um, and they, they're going to help us with, um, the Indian Point property. If the board so votes that way to have them, um, so they're a planning company.
Did F P Clark merge into Hanover?
Yeah, I think.
Hanover, or did, uh, uh, you know, I mean, it's still a lot of the same people from F P Clark are with this company. Is it basically the same company under a new ownership, or is it, was it a couple of companies that merged? Do we know?
I think Hanover mer, um, bought out F P Clark, if I'm not.
Bought them out?
That was my understanding, yeah. So services here, Rich, that continue planning advisory service related to the review and processing of subdivisions, site plans, special permits, variances, rezonings, and other applications, and special planning, zoning, traffic, or environmental matters initiated at the request of the village.
We only pay them when they actually work, is that it? This is not a yearly contract, is it?
Well, it shows the hourly rate for the.
Yeah, I mean.
That's correct, that's correct. Rich, that's correct. Whenever the, we do any kind of application, that's the time they get paid.
Right, okay.
Upon the request of the Planning and Zoning Board Chairman, they will attend the meetings at their request.
That's correct.
For, uh, the new determination that was made by the Village Board several months ago, any of their services, whether it's residential or commercial, are backcharged to them. Because whenever a, a applicant comes before them, we require them to put up escrow based on the amount of effort that the project will be required. So the majority now, uh, will be charged to the applicant, where before, only the commercial applicants were being charged, and the residential applicants were being afforded the services. So the majority of the work that they will be performing will not come directly from village funds, even though you will see a disbursement of village funds, because we pay the bill. However, we take, we're like an intermediary between the, uh, the escrow fund.
I got you. Yeah, okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, good. All right, so, oh my gosh, so on a motion to renew the planning consultant, and we, we've done that. We, and I said on a question, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? In favor? Aye, okay.
Aye.
We got that done. Sorry.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye is right. Okay, consider a motion to authorize the village attorney to prepare a resolution, other documents regarding the firefighter exemption program. And Nick, I know you weren't at the last meeting, so alls I'm looking for is consensus from the board that we should, we should have Stephanie move forward and, um, and Stephanie wasn't with us last time. So I just want a consensus from the board that they're interested in moving this forward, uh, for the fire, uh, firefighter exemption program.
Yeah, I thought it was relatively insignificant, insignificant amount of money, and, and they, these are volunteers, and it's a good way to, uh, to reward them.
Okay, I think it's, uh, I think it's a good thing, too.
And was there a question, was the question answered, uh, regarding if the firefighter passes away, uh, what are the conditions for the spouse collecting that, uh, that, getting that tax break?
Hey, Nick?
Yeah.
So under the law, you can also allow for that. Um, so you can do one, two, or three, and I'll send you a memo on it, because the language is pretty specific. You can continue it on for the deceased firefighter, as long as he had twenty years of service, I believe it is, but I'll send you a memo on it.
Okay.
And most, most communities that have done this have also, um, allowed for the deceased's spouse, so long as.
Okay.
He was a member for twenty years, or whatever the number is, but I'll explain it to you. You can do one, two, adopt them all, whatever you want to do.
Okay, but I'm generally, I mean, I'm in favor of it. I think, uh, as Rich said, these are volunteers and they're very important to us. And, uh, whatever, you know, there's a, there are a handful of small things we could do to make it a little bit better for them, uh, and, uh, I, I think it's a good thing to do.
Okay, so, all right, on a motion to authorize the village attorney to prepare a resolution and any other documents regarding the firefighter exemption program.
Well, why don't we change that instead of the resolution? Why don't we change that to be doing some research and sending you a memo on how you'd like to proceed?
All right, so then we should table this, this, uh, resolution also, and then you will do a memo for us, and we can discuss it once again at the workshop in Sep, in, um, September.
Yeah, and interestingly enough, uh, Senator Harkam right now has in front of, in Albany, um, he's amending the real property tax law four sixty-six D, which deals with Westchester County villages, towns, uh, because it used to say something like, you know, with a population of nine hundred thousand to nine hundred and seventy-nine, you know, hundred thousand, and they're, they're, they're seeking to strike that. And that is where I got a little hung up. I mean, I didn't do all that much research, but I did do some, and I thought, wait a minute, what do I have to go to the last census? So they're updating that right now, which is a good thing. Um, but I just wanted you to know that, because that should be voted on shortly.
Okay.
And probably pass and should, because I think other communities have just ignored it and said, well, you know, that's ridiculous. But anyway, so I will get a memo to you. I'll show you a copy of that section of the law. And when I read it, what it says is by resolution, local law, or ordinance, and that has not seemingly changed, so that would be up to you as well.
But I'll get that. Do we need a public hearing to put it on the ballot?
If you put it on the ballot, yeah, you're going to have to, you're going to have, well, I don't think it has to go on the ballot, but I could be wrong. Um, the section I'm talking about, now there is a little blip in that, when you look at the assessor's manual, it says a different section. Um, you'd have to do it by proposition, which would be to put it on the ballot, but I'm still not sure that if you do one, it doesn't cancel the other. Um, and I want to make really clear about that before I send you the memo, so that we're not hurting anybody.
Because if I remember correctly, the assessor sent the other, last month that we had to put it on.
Yeah, they're sending in the assessor's manual. But it's nowhere else that I can find, including the reference on the assessor's manual, which, uh, leads back to the real property tax law four sixty-six D. And Tom is away this week, because I, you know, I gave him a call, because I would like to know. I don't see it anywhere else. And the other communities that I've looked up that have passed this by local law, I've not seemingly seen that either. There may be some differences between a village and a town, but I would like to talk to him a bit more. He's away, so I'm.
But even if we have, even if we have a local law, we're going to need.
Yeah, or you could do it by resolution as well, which is really odd in the law, or by ordinance, so, um, so I'm still doing the research on it. But if you do it by local law, yep. If you put on the ballot, yep. If you do it by resolution, no.
All right, so we need to do more research on that. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. So we're going to table that.
Okay.
All right, um, I'm going to make a motion to retain the services of Labat Balkan, Colavita, and Contini LLP, a special counsel. The village has gotten a notice of claim for allegations that go back to nineteen ninety-two, and we need to retain special counsel. So on a motion to retain the special counsel, Elabat Balkan, Colavita, and Contini LLP.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, on a question?
What's the budget?
Well, we have to defend the village. That's, that's the whole problem. Like, we, we have to. You know, it's one of those things. We can't just say, uh, you know, never mind. Since we got.
Well, we, we have, we have to know how much we want to allocate before we decide to capitulate. You know what I mean? And under what fund would this be coming out of? Do we have a budget line for this types of litigation or not?
I believe, Marcus, we have a, a special, uh, a fund, um, in the budget for, uh, special counsel.
Yeah, we have some money set aside for that, so if we go over that amount of money, we're going to have to transfer out a contingency or fund balance or something, but, uh, as we get close to that number, I'll let the board know, and then we can have another meeting to discuss whether, whether additional funds will be coming from, but by then, hopefully, special counsel will have a discussion with the board to give you their insight in regards to, maybe they could give you some clarification in regards to how much they think it's going to cost to defend, or where we stand at that point.
So what's that number you're talking about?
I, I gotta pull out the budget. I don't have it. I have to pull out the budget. I will email the board.
And I didn't, I don't remember if we got a contract. What's his hourly rate? Right, because everybody has a different matrix for, you know, research, legal, uh, you know, the clerk, the primary, the secondary attorneys.
Yeah, he does.
Stephanie sent an email out to the board, I believe, some couple of days ago with the.
It's the engagement letter you're talking about. What it says, Sean, is, um, which isn't always all that helpful. Two seventy-five for, um, services performed by partners and of council attorneys. Um, two thirty for services performed by associates of the firm, and a hundred per hour for services performed by paralegals.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's awfully cheap. Why is it so low?
Yeah, I don't know. And they do, what's interesting about them, I spoke to the partner, um, who's, who gave us the, for about an hour, um, who gave us the engagement letter, and what's interesting about him is Zurich is who disclaimed on this one. Um, and they work with them and against them often, and are very familiar with their, um, attorneys. And so he and I haven't gotten into a large discussion, but we're going to. Um, because in my opinion, this might be really ripe for a motion to dismiss, and he was thinking the same thing. In that case, it would go rather quickly. But those are his hours. I mean, that's what he said. Those are his hours.
Yeah, they're reasonable.
His fees per hour.
Who, who's, who's defending the other, who's defending the other defendants?
Oh, the, the town and the school district?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is there a reason why we couldn't join, join them? We joined them in other things. Why can't we join them in defense?
Well, because their position is this is all us and nothing to do with them. So they're going to seek to get out rather quickly.
Whose position is that? The school district?
The town of Cortland's position is.
Oh.
They didn't run this, so they were sued as well. So the school district, my understanding is that this was the village of Buchanan had some sort of wreck.
Um, yeah, yes, we did.
Stephanie, we have to go into executive session. Are we, are we?
No.
Okay, okay, all right.
Hey, I just find it interesting.
No.
I, I just find it interesting that the school district and the town of Cortland are willing to work with us on other projects, but when it comes to spending money on defense of ourselves, they abandoned us like we had the plague, which is why we should have abandoned them long before, but that's just, that's just my thing.
Well, you have to really understand all the circumstances before you can actually say that.
I understand.
That's all, you know, I'm saying about that.
Steph, did you send out the, uh, I, I don't remember getting that synopsis. Could you send that out again? I'll check my emails, but.
Sure, it would have, yeah, it's an engagement letter. It's for.
Engagement letter, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty clear, and he made it really clear that he'll keep me, um, updated. There's also, well, that should be an executive session. There's another avenue we might take, but, but I don't want to say that publicly, so maybe an executive session, we can go through it a little bit more.
No, I understand. I just, you know, I always like to know how much we're going to spend.
Yeah, I'll send that out to you.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, so where did we end up? On a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, no one. Okay, so the next, this is one that we added on. Um, I, the board will remember, we, uh, agreed to have a license agreement for two fifty-seven Tate Avenue. Um, so moving forward, and this is the property that's right next to our park that we're going to be redeveloping shortly. Um, so to move forward with this agreement, um, the village property needs to be surveyed. An escrow account from two fifty-seven will have to be set up. Um, and, uh, that, uh, so I'm going to make a motion to retain the services of Matthew Noviello to perform a survey of the village property that has been encroached, um, by the property owner of two fifty-seven Tate.
Can I just interrupt for a minute?
Sure, yeah.
Um, this is how this has gone. So the owners of two fifty-seven Tate hired counsel who wrote to me and sent me, um, a draft license agreement for, on behalf of her client. And, you know, I'm not going to comment on much of it because I rejected it. But what we've been going back and forth was that, um, the client, her client needs to put in an escrow so that the village can, um, survey your property for a meets and bounds description, because for a licensing agreement, you need, need, needs and bounds, just to be really clear. And, and they, they really bought it that, and they offered that they'd have their own surveyor do it. Um, my understanding is the latest email I got from the attorney was, you're right, I'm going to tell my client to, to put in the escrow. So Marcus, has she done that?
As of tonight, no, but my last email with her was, I guess they were away on vacation, and she said, and she didn't tell me specifically, so she said, when I return from my vacation, we'll be, we'll be releasing a check. That's the way she left it.
All right, good. So then, moving forward, once we get that, then Teresa, sorry to interrupt you, but we would have a survey. And then I would, I just want to know before I continue on on this, was it, it was the consensus of the board that you wish to grant a license agreement, presuming we know what we own and what we're licensing, um, before I keep going with this attorney. Is that true?
I didn't know we ever came to that conclusion.
Well, I didn't either. That's why I'm asking.
That's, no, remember, we had the discussion on her parking there, and that we came up with, uh, some type of a fee for her to park there. Um, so we just have to figure out, yeah, we, I forget what, it was a couple of months ago, we had that discussion.
Oh, no, we had a big discussion on different options, and, you know, there was a, a little issue with the type of construction that the wall was made out of, and, uh, before we came up with a course of action, we wanted to ensure that not only was the wall structurally sound, but the fill behind that wall was structurally sound. You know, there was a telephone pole that was in the middle of that, and, uh, there were other issues that were involved, and I didn't know that we were actually going to leave it as is with no contingencies on it, uh, unless this is the first step is, is having the survey, and then we go into the, uh, the details to protect the village.
Is the wall, is the wall on village property, or is it?
It's on a neighbor's property, I think.
Yeah, it's on the neighbor's property.
Okay, so then in my opinion, that's a neighbor problem and. Okay, so then in my opinion, that's a neighbor problem and probably a building inspector problem versus letting her park on your property? Because if, if she, if she did that, right, on the neighbor's property. I mean, you know, we don't usually take that on. Like, if somebody, you know, encroaches on your property, the village isn't really going to get involved in defending that or prosecuting that or, well, the building inspector would. So has he looked, has he looked at that?
Yes.
The, the, the project was one in the same. It's two adjoining pieces of property. One is the village and one is the neighbor. And they improved both of them and are parking cars on both of them. So it is a continuous development between the two properties. So we, we wanted to, and we didn't really know the, the line of demarcation. We knew that wall was there a long time ago. There were a lot of things that went into it. And we can't just license half of a driveway. You know, and tell them to take it out and go talk to the, go talk, go sue the, the neighbor to get the other half taken off, you know?
No, 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 no. But I thought the wall wasn't on any part of the village's triangular piece of property. And we don't know that because we don't have a meets and bounds, which is why we asked for escrow to do that.
I think what they wanted to do was to park like, not like one, you know, one and then one behind the other, which would then, at that point, my understanding was, would bring them on to the village property.
Oh, they definitely want to be on the village property because they handed me a license agreement, which basically, you know.
Let them use it. Their driveway, if we look at that, if we could look at, they, they did already have a survey of their own. I think if we look at that survey, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus. It's at that end of their driveway that they would encroach on the village property.
No, yeah, yeah, no. What they have, the entire back of the property, if you look from White Street onto it, there's a little wall and the stair, and the stairs, from that wall to White Street, it looks like it is village property. That's what we need to meet to, they don't have any access from the back of the property to White Street.
That's correct.
Yeah, and half of that up to the telephone pole going east is the neighbor's property.
That's correct. That's correct.
Up to the part that is the, yeah, so.
Correct, so.
A continuous part of that that is village and paved on top of the neighbor's property.
Correct. And, and Sean, just to add more information for that, we've asked the next door neighbor to provide their survey as well. So we can identify where their property, where these people might encroach on their property as well. And the wall, the building inspector has asked for engineering of that wall, which they said they're going to provide that as well. So besides the part that we're talking about, the village property, there's a, a bunch of other issues that they're dealing with as well with the building department.
Have we gotten the survey?
Nick is showing with that, Nick, with that ten, yeah, with that ten is.
I don't know if you can see this, but their property doesn't even reach White Street.
That's correct.
Ends and the village property wraps around it.
That's correct. You got it. Right there in that corner, yep. So, so Teresa, they have no access to White Street. With that ten is, that's the end of their property that he shows on the map. So, so, so there's a whole bunch of issues. I'm just trying to identify the village property. And if we know where the village property ends, then the neighbor's property starts. And that's another issue they have to deal with.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we're ready to write a licensing agreement until we come up with the plan. But I think we should just go with the survey contingent upon the applicant supplying us with escrow fund.
Alright.
And that's what we've said.
Yep. Alright, so we got, we got some things to still continue discussion on.
Okay, so we can, we can approve this resolution contingent upon the establishment of an escrow fund. So as soon as they put it in, then we start doing surveys.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct. That's what we're looking for. Correct.
So, but then is the board now, you know, I'm, I'm listening to all the comments here, is the board still willing to go forward with that, to do a licensing?
I don't think we should discuss licensing now. I think we should find a meets and bounds and then discuss what we want to do with it. As long as it's not going to impact any village resources, any village funds, and the applicant's going to pay for it, then we could decide once we know what exactly we're talking about.
What they can do and what they can't do.
I don't think Stephanie should be spending any time going with licensing agreements until we make a determination.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. Thinking of the conversation that we had a couple of months ago about this and how there was. I'll have to look back and how there was a fee that was come up, there was a fee that was agreed on for them to do that. But, but the horse got way before the cart here. So, so we're going to make a motion. Where did I go again? So we're going to make a motion for an escrow account be set up from two fifty-seven. And the company that will be doing the survey is Matthew Noviello for the the survey.
And that's only for the meets and bounds for the village piece of property, right, Marcus?
One hundred percent correct.
Okay, good.
Downs for village property, okay? Alright, so can, I, I did the motion.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor? So we can get this, get that resolved. Okay, so the other thing that I did add on to the agenda and was the Siemens agreement. The village was interested in doing a study on how to save money, upgrading our infrastructure, improve energy efficiency, lighting efficiency, et cetera, et cetera. And we originally hoped the savings would outweigh the cost. So we, Siemens moved forward to do the study, which we now currently have all of the information. We got back, you know, we got the backup and the studies. And so now they are looking to get paid. And we, we at, you know, we, we don't, things changed and our, our financial situation changed. I know the school had, I had spoken to the school about Siemens. They were very pleased with what they did for the school with their upgrades. But I think moving forward at this time until we can see where we are with the cessation fund, where exactly we are with the pilot agreement, which is, you know, that has to be hammered out yet. So I, I think for now, we do owe them money for the services that they did, the work that they did. And they're looking to get paid, of course. And so I would like to, you know, make a motion to pay Siemens for the work that they've done that we can still use going forward if we decide to do certain projects. One of the things I want to tell you that will come out of there, and we've had this discussion, is the heating system at Village Hall. We need to do the heating system like for this, this winter. It's, it's on its last leg. God knows how old that is. It's probably from nineteen seventy-six. But, and we were fortunate enough, well, when I renegotiated with Entergy for that extra year, and we've discussed this before, that we have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the Entergy agreement that we are going to use to replace the furnace. So the Siemens has been working with us. They have given us a twenty percent discount. So for all of the work that they've done and the reports, Marcus, if you could please forward the reports to the board. We've received a twenty, twenty percent discount. So the fee that we would have to pay would be fifty-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen. And just remember going forward, that work has already been done. So we can pick and choose what projects we'd like to do going forward. We can continue to look for grants. For some of the projects, there are grants available. So that's what I have for this evening. So on a motion to pay Siemens, the fifty-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars for services rendered. So move second.
Second.
All in favor?
On the question?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, this is part of the September fourth, two thousand eighteen resolution that authorized the expenditure of six hundred and forty thousand dollars for these energy performance contracts. When I had made this a, an issue during the campaign, I was told that I was lying. Trusty Funtions' letter to the editor in March of two thousand twenty-one said, "The board did not authorize six hundred and forty thousand dollars for energy performance contracts." As you can see right now, you absolutely did.
I did not. That's not there.
You know what? I would like to, I, I don't have the, the thing in front of me because I think it was, I, see, I can't, I can't comment on that until I see something other than that. I don't, I can't comment on that at this time. But you know what? We're at a point now, you, we need to make a decision. You know what? We have to pay these people. Either we're going to pay them or we're not going to pay them. Then we're going to be in a different situation. So.
The other question I have is that bill from Siemens that was sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is currently on an invoice sitting on a desk in Village Hall, was given to the village in January of two thousand and twenty-one. None of this was ever budgeted for. We knew we had an eleven percent expense to that six hundred and forty thousand dollars, and this was never discussed during the budget hearings. And I was told on several occasions that I was not only misleading, but being incorrect in my assumption that the resolution that specifically states six hundred and forty thousand dollars was authorized, that I was wrong. So contingent upon the vote on this, I would like a resolution revoking the mayor's authorization to expend the remainder of those funds. Because there has never been a resolution that says that we don't, that we cannot spend those funds. We shouldn't be able to spend these funds unless they're budgeted for. The contract entered into by the mayor in two thousand, in May of two thousand and nineteen specifically, specifically says that the contract should be null and void, would be null and void if the village did not bond within a certain timeframe. So I don't see how we're even liable for the engineering services. Because the terms and conditions set forth in the two thousand and nineteen agreement were not fulfilled by the village creating a bond for the, the amount set forth in the resolutions. So, you know, we can't have an open-ended paycheck, an open-ended checkbook of almost six hundred thousand dollars with, 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 with no budget.
It was, this was a financing package. This was what we were, were doing. The savings, and if you see the report, the savings show that a lot of it was paying for itself. We were not putting out six hundred and forty thousand dollars. It was that amount of work. So now you're going to take six forty and remove a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the, for the the heating system at Village Hall. So we're at a point now where we owe them for money of services that they provided. We don't have to go forward. The board can decide if financially the village has, finds more money or more grants or something, we can go forward. So by paying them, that stops that right there. We don't have to go forward any further. We're, tonight, we're just paying them for the services that they render.
Yeah, there was, the contract was with Siemens. And at a certain point, in order for them to continue with their, with their assessments and studies, we had to authorize that. At the time, it seemed like a good idea because they would be financing all of the work and the village did need a lot of work to, as far as a boiler, some energy efficiency upgrades, like LED lighting at the Village Hall, things like this. So it seemed like a good package. And the, and the thing that I think I remember being the appeal to me was that Siemens would finance all of this work. And so we wouldn't have to come up with a big amount of money all at once. But unfortunately, in order for them to continue with their studies, our contract with them is what led to that bill for sixty-nine thousand. And it would have been nice if we could have gotten more than a twenty percent discount, but if that's the best we could do, I don't think we have a choice but to, to make that payment. Otherwise, we're going to have some litigation. They're going to, you know, there's probably going to be some litigation.
Look, let me read to you Article one of the contract signed on May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Says, "Paying for scope of work." And this isn't the entire paragraph, but says, "The funding of the escrow account in an amount equal to or greater than the price stated in Article one point one above shall be a condition precedent to Siemens' obligation to perform or to continue the performance of work. If the escrow account is not funded within days of the execution of this agreement, this agreement shall be null, null and void. The day of funding period may be extended as mutually agreed upon in writing by the parties." That is dated May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. The bill that we're discussing paying has an invoice date of January eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so I think.
Started work.
Yeah, I understand. I would love it if there was a way out of this whole thing, but, but.
The way out is to follow that agreement that you guys signed.
Yeah, but there might be some other print that says if that work is null and void, that we're still liable for the engineering services in doing all of the assessments they did. So, is that, can we, can we go through some of the rest of the fine print in that contract?
Yeah, there is. There's, there's, there's a clause in there. And they made it pretty clear that if we, once we signed, if we decided not to move forward after we committed, we would be responsible for paying for their time, their studies and the material.
Absolutely. The, the remainder of the paragraph says, "In the event that the agreement becomes null and void as described in this paragraph, and client has previously authorized Siemens to proceed with the work, the client shall be obligated to reimburse Siemens either for work performed to date or the work specifically authorized by the client." Since no escrow account was ever set up, work should never have been performed. Because there's no way they did seventy thousand dollars work within days, the weekend before Memorial Day.
They didn't just do this in a weekend.
This, this was ongoing for a while.
I, I, well, it started in, actually, it started in November of two thousand and seventeen with a resolution. And then it's continued on September fourth, two thousand and eighteen, when the six hundred and forty thousand dollars is authorized to be expended. Then the contract was executed on May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, which required the establishment of the escrow account equal to or greater than the contract, which was six hundred and forty thousand dollars, which was to be set up within days of execution of said contract. But, you know, the, the, it's, it's all pretty black and white. And this invoice has been sitting down there since January. Why wasn't this even budgeted? You knew. I didn't know until I started doing research.
Because we were. I think we were negotiating and trying to get out of it. And I think that legally, we had no other recourse. So maybe we need to, I don't know. Stephanie, do you think we need to, that there's some text in the agreement that would clarify this for Sean?
Even if we have to pay it, when you guys authorized the expenditure of six hundred and forty thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen, there should have been some allocation in one of the three preceding budgets.
Sean, that was the scope of the work, the six hundred and forty thousand dollars. We were able to pick what we wanted to do going forward. And they were doing all these cost estimates to see what the payback of whatever we were doing would happen over ten years, twenty years, I believe it was. So it wasn't that we were, we were definitely doing the six forty, but there was an agreement, if we decided not to go forward, that we would have to pay to cover the expenses for the, the, the actual services that they're providing. Once we pay these services, that's it. We are not obligated to go further with them. That's the end. The board down the road decides that they want to continue or they're looking at doing these kind of things, then they can come back. But all the groundwork, all that stuff is done now. And that's what we're paying for.
There is currently nothing, there is currently no legislation or resolutions that prevents the village from spending up to six hundred and forty thousand dollars on energy performance contracts. The resolution is specific, is very specific. It says, "The village now tends to authorize the negotiation, execution, delivery of one or more performance contracts as related to lease purchase agreements in an aggregate original principal amount not to exceed six hundred and forty thousand dollars plus reasonable costs and insurances in connection therewith." So there's still legislation open on the books that allows the expenditure of six hundred and forty thousand dollars that I think this loophole should be closed. We have to have a resolution that rescinds the authorization for this unbudgeted expenditure.
Alright, Sean, we're going to get you those reports. You and Anthony, we're going to get you those reports. I, we are going to make a motion to pay for what we've, the services that were provided. And then if we have to make a resolution at a later point to close that down, then that, therefore, we will.
Can anybody answer why, when we knew we incurred this sixty-nine thousand dollar liability in January, why it was never brought up in any of the budget hearings that we had this potential liability? why it was never brought up in any of the budget hearings that we had this potential liability? Can any of the previously sitting board members tell me why that was overlooked? Because as soon as I sat down in April to go over the bills, that bill was in there. And it had a sticky attached to it that says, "Do not pay." So that voucher has been sitting there for a long time.
That we're not gonna pay the sixty-nine thousand. We were trying to negotiate something with Siemens, so-
We were looking for any legal, any way out of it and, uh, apparently were boxed in by some contractual stuff that, uh, was, I guess, uh, Kevin, the previous administrator, came to us and asked us if we wanted to proceed. I only remember that, um, the primary appeal to me was, aside from, these were things that we wanted to do, was the fact that Siemens would finance it so we would not have to come up. There was, they, they, their contention was that our energy savings would pay for the, um, for the whole project over time. And they were, and the financing would be extended out long enough to be neutralized by the energy savings. Um, and, um, I'd have to go back and look through the paperwork, uh, but I believe, um, you know, just because of the financing aspect of it, it was appealing to me. Um, but I think even though we've decided to take some of these improvements piecemeal and try to do them uh, as we can and as we need to, um, I, you know, I, I, I think that the issue was that there was some contractual component requiring us to, after a certain point, up to a certain point, uh, there was no legal, financial legal obligation, but after a certain point that we authorized, um, unfortunately, in retrospect, but we authorized it, we were then legally obligated to pay the engineering fees incurred by Siemens up to that point.
Listen, I, I understand exactly what you're saying and it is not there in there. However, it says if the escrow account is not funded within days of execution of the agreement, it is null and void. So where it says days, there's no way to incur that amount of engineering work within days.
No, 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 that engineering, that was their studies that was going on from day one. Uh, uh, you know, not just in those days. That, that was the prep work that they did to get us to that point of the six hundred and forty thousand dollar figure.
Right, so you mean to tell me that the village authorized that expenditure before of having an analysis? You guys were willing to spend seventy thousand dollars to have an analysis for?
We had the analysis, we thought it was wise to proceed, but, um, you know, as our finances changed and, uh, we thought we might be able to do certain individual components and not do the whole six hundred and forty. Uh, you know, we, we, we thought it and we're trying to get out of it, which is why we didn't pay that. We were trying to look for recourse on those engineering fees. Um, I don't have the fine print in front of me, but I believe we are legally obligated by contract for those fees.
Services rendered, correct.
Well, what, what was the previous contract? Because this contract is May of two thousand and nineteen.
You know what?
Was there a different contract?
We're gonna continue the conversation, but not everybody has all the documentation in front of them. So I'm more than happy to have the conversation with you, but everyone doesn't have the documentation.
Marcus sent it out a couple of months ago.
Okay, but do they have it in front of them tonight? No, they don't.
I believe it's a trustee's responsibility to, I think it's the trustee's responsibility to have the documents for expenditure of funds.
So tonight, what we're going to do, once again, I'm going to make a motion to pay the services that were rendered from Siemens to close that chapter. And we don't have to go forward and we will get that information to you also. So you know what? We had all intentions of doing this. It was a good thing for the village. There were savings that were gonna be incurred. It was a financing option for the village instead of expending all that money. And the payback was supposed to come, for example, over twenty years. So it, it would look like a good situation. We were going into doing it and then, you know, our finances, everything changed and then we said, whoa, you know? So we were looking at to doing something positive for the village. So we will continue the conversation. But this evening, I'd like to make a motion so that we can pay the amount to Siemens that we owe for the services that were rendered. And the amount, once again, is, hold on, is five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. So on a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second, I have a question, but I have a question.
Okay, on a question, go ahead.
Just, just to get down to press tax, I'll address the question to Stephanie, who has, uh, reviewed this and has been, uh, uh, doing the contact, contact work with them. Do we have any recourse here?
I mean, we could litigate it if that's what you'd want, but it'll be expensive.
Okay, so what?
I think they made it, I think they made it really clear several times that once we got beyond that point and what we were signing was to say, you can jump out anytime you want. I mean, they got bound, bond counsel involved. There were some, there was some work done there. Um, and then we decided to not do that. And that's really the extent of my involvement in it at that time, as we all know now. Um, and so, sure, you could litigate anything you want.
Okay, but I mean, short of litigation, uh, the contract and, uh, the, whatever we have authorized uh, them to proceed on requires us to make this payment now for face litigation.
That's correct.
Yeah, so what are- What, what it seems to me is that after the September fourth, two thousand and eighteen resolution, which authorized the expenditure of the six hundred and forty thousand dollars, somebody might have contacted Siemens and said, "Do the research, let us know what we want." And then when they came back with the analysis, then, uh, the mayor signed the contract on May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. And then when they wanted the escrow money to be deposited, the village probably said, "Hey, we don't have the escrow money." They said, "Well, what are you talking about?" And you said, "Well, we don't think we wanna go forward," and that's when everything stopped. So this, that's, seems like the logical course of events. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Can one of the previous board members who were involved with this entire process tell me if that's the way you remember it?
Uh, yes, we had the right to not proceed with the work, but we were obligated to pay the, uh, legal and engineering uh, fees that went into the, uh, building of their report and assessing all the different village needs.
See, the clause that you're mentioning was in a contract from two thousand and nineteen. The stipulations was I'm talking about were the authorization for expenditure in two thousand and eighteen. So that, I, that's probably where the lapse is. Because no work should have taken place until a contract was signed with the terms and conditions of payment. Okay? That's where I believe the error was made. But I might, I'm probably, I'm sure you guys won't agree with me on that, but that's where it is. And we still have the open agreement, the open resolution authorizing that expenditure, which I believe we should have a resolution rescinding the authorization for the expenditure of over six hundred thousand of unbudgeted funds. And we should have that at the next, discuss it at the next workshop meeting and have legislation in October. Because there's no reason why you have to pay a company to tell you you need a oil burner. Okay? You knew you needed it, either Siemens told you or not, all right?
The report, there's a lot more to it. So the agreement that, that we've made with them allows the village to terminate with this payment. That's the end of it. So we don't move forward. If the village later on decides that they do wanna move forward, then they can continue with it. But for now, if we, we make this payment, it terminates it. That's the end, we're moving on. So later on, I don't know, maybe somebody will donate three million dollars to the village and the village goes, woo-hoo, yeah, I'd like to do that. And then they can. So, but right now, we just didn't think it was wise to go forward with it. And why that gap was, is because we were trying to negotiate something.
What were you trying to negotiate, Mayor?
We were trying to negotiate the fee down, which we have by twenty percent. That's what we were trying to negotiate. This is the, this is what these people, the services that they supplied, Sean. Just like when, you know, you were looking at the sewer treatment plant when you, in your time. Did you have to pay the engineer to do that?
No, actually, I didn't. Because it was given to us by the, uh, county underneath their budgetary requirements for nineteen thousand dollars. They supplied that survey free with the three different options from Tom Laurel of West Duster County. So it was free, actually.
At the sewer treatment plant, didn't we? We, we spent a hell of a lot of money over there.
Yep.
And we're in the same boat. So, all right. So any, any, Marcus, you have any, any, um, advice you'd like to give us? Stephanie, do you have any advice you'd like to give us at this time?
I would just suggest that I think Trustee Murray might be right about, uh, doing a resolution rescinding that authorization. Just to get it cleared up and off the books. And so it's not an open-ended item that might, you know, you can spend it three years from now. Not that you would, but it would clear it up and off the books.
Okay.
And I can prepare the, you know, anytime you ask.
That'd be perfect, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, does the previous, the previous administrator, uh, employed by Siemens now? I mean, this is-
Did what? Say that again?
Is the previous, uh, administrator employed by Siemens now?
That's what I thought you said.
I mean, this is, uh, for consulting, I'm not, I don't want anything to do with this, but I, I see no way out of it. You know?
Yeah.
It just, I, I feel like we need to pay this bill, but I, 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 I hate to agree to it.
I know. Well, we're not doing a happy dance either.
Consulting, you're getting consulting, consulted on whether or not you should change your oil burner, whether or not you should change your light bulbs. It, it's just, this, this seems crazy.
All right, so that's what I want Marcus to, everybody, the reports, please send out to everybody so that they, they see what, you know, what was worked on, what their thoughts were, what were their thoughts on-
Well, I, I think Anthony hit it on the head there. It's unfortunate, but, uh, you know, I mean, the, from the previous administrator, as it was explained, I think it sounded, it's, it, it seemed like it would be a, a good way to go, but, uh, um, you know, we did give them the proceed. Uh, at a certain point, it, the administrator came to us and said, "Do we give them the authorization to proceed? Because up to now, we're not obligated for anything. If we give them the authorization to proceed, authorization to proceed, you will be liable for certain fees if you back out." With the change in finances, we've decided to back out, but, um, you know, it's unfortunate, unfortunate. It sounded better at the time. In retrospect, it was a mistake.
Yeah, I'm just glad that the, the villages admitted that they actually did enter into this contract for the expenditure of these funds. I'm glad that they're, uh, have admitted that they authorized the resolution in two thousand and eighteen as well as signed a contract in two thousand and nineteen, contrary to trustee's function letter to the editor where it specifically states that they did not-
Sean, 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 let's stop with the-
I'm just bringing up the facts, I'm sorry.
Please, you know, Sean, this village, we're, we're not-
Bible and slander, sir, I take them serious.
Not in a good place here, Sean. We need to somehow learn to work together going forward.
And the first-
The next couple of years is teetering, okay? And the fighting, going back and forth, I got you, I got you. No, no. We need to, from now on, focus on how this village is gonna survive. How we're going to work together. How we're going to move the village forward. You know, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't see this village surviving. I hope I'm wrong. But the constant fighting, what are we doing to save the village? Does anybody have those thoughts? How can we, we increase our tax base? Oh, hey, maybe we should talk about the development of Indian Point. Hey, that's a thought. You know what? What are the positive things that we need to focus on? This is not nineteen ninety, this is not the year two thousand. The village is going through a transformation. And you know what? That's fine. If you wanna play the political thing, I'm not feeding into that anymore. I choose to focus on positive things. I have a list of positive things that are happening here in the village. The focus, how are we going to survive? What do we need to do in the next couple of years? Because it gets tougher and tougher and tougher. I've asked Marcus, after we get the money from the cessation fund, because we're not, there, there's another ask we did, so we might be getting a little bit more. I've asked him to do a five-year projection. I'm hoping that opens some eyes. I'm hoping people go, oh my God. I'm hoping my board goes, oh my God, what can we do? What can we do? You know, so that's where I am. So I, I'm, I'm done with the political, I'm done with that. I, I just, I'm focusing on positive, productive things to move the village forward, so-
I, I, I couldn't agree with you more, Mayor. Uh, you know, the first, the first step-
That's where I'm coming from.
The first step to communication is being honest.
I like being honest. I like it.
Not, not feeding on rumor and innuendo. Not putting misleading information and blatant lies out to the public.
I want us to have a better way to communicate, Sean.
Sure.
I want us to be able to communicate. I want all five board members to be able to communicate without fear of retribution, bullying, attacking. That's not helping the village. I don't know how, I, I, I don't know what else to say. It's like, let's work together. The village depends on it. That's what it depends on. Otherwise, we're not gonna be a village anymore. And whether I'm mayor or not, that doesn't matter. That's not my ultimate goal in life. My goal is to try to get the village to the finish line. And we all need to be focused on that. That's the goal. So yes, this wasn't the best case scenario, but we owe these people some money and we're going to pay them, I think. Let's see what the board decides on at this point. And if you and I wanna have an offline conversation on how perhaps we can communicate better, we can work better together, what goals we could focus on, I would love that. That would be super duper. I would be on board with that. But you know what? We're spinning our wheels here. We're not progressing forward. We're not, we're not helping the village. And you know what? That's all I'm here for. You know what? And I just, that's what I, I wanna see the village survive. That is my number one priority. If it doesn't, it's not, it's not gonna be 'cause I decided to be negative and, and, uh, you know, do political stuff. So let's figure out how we can all work together, um, and let's move forward. So on a motion to approve the payment of fifty, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars, um, can I have a, a second, please?
We had the second and the question.
Okay, and we did on a question, right? So, one favor, I will approve this expenditure even though I'm not happy. I?
I.
I.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Thank you. So let's move on because it's, uh, getting late and we have some other stuff to discuss. So the justice court report for July twenty twenty-one, um, we all have that, that's received and filed. I would just like to mention that, uh, one of the courts bought in two thousand dollars and the other court bought in one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Um, the next, uh, report is the police report, July twenty twenty-one. Rich, if you'd like to go over anything with that, 'cause I know you're, you're, uh, the-
I might, you know, the, uh, later, later.
Sure. The highway report, July twenty twenty-one, wastewater treatment plant. We have, everything is okay over there. Um, and the building department, a lot of permits, a lot of, they're, they're doing a lot of work on-
Yeah, I got a question that, uh, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Unless I'm in front of me, it looks like something called ISFSI pad plus cast transfer pit.
It's fussy, Rich. That's energy, Sean knows where that is over there.
Yeah, but I didn't have a question on that, Mayor, because you guys had said that the building department is just trying to cover its costs. I was just wondering, what cost is gonna cost forty-two thousand dollars for a concrete pad?
I guess there is some type of a formula that is-
It's based on the size of the project. And that's the way wall building permits and inspections are based on the size of the project. You know, that, that's how, I just found it a little odd. The especially, uh, the applicant is at four fifty Broadway, Rich, and the official is, uh, interns spent fuel storage. That's where you put all the cash.
So they're, they're building another pad.
Oh, okay.
Another pad, because in total, there'll be approximately a hundred and twenty-five spent fuel casts on the pad. So, okay, so we've received the building department, you can an engine, structure fires. We had one EMS assist, three other emergency, two mutual aid, four mutual aid received, one. Um, we have prosecutors reports. Um, thank you, Cindy, for, for printing out that out for us. So that, that kind of gets us up to date and, um, it's kind of an executive session thing, but Sean, the, uh, thing that you had mentioned that you would like to see happening is in progress.
What's that?
The, um, speaking, uh, to the judge and all those issues, yeah.
Oh, yeah. The one I was talking to Marcus about, the prosecutor's one, I'll bring that up on my report.
Uh, planning board minutes, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, received and filed attorneys report. Stephanie, do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, we have nothing in zoning. We have one that are still in planning, which I think might be- Uh, we have nothing in zoning. We have one that are still in planning, which I think might be deemed abandoned shortly. I was gonna bring up the two fifty-seven Tate license agreement issue, we've already discussed it.
Okay.
The only other thing I have is I think you all got the code. Remember when we hired the company to go through our code and, and give us some suggestions?
Yes.
Whatever the agreement was. So I think we all got that email, it's a hundred pages. I guess I kind of thought that they would be making a good amount of those changes for us, or adding or subtracting, or whatever they were gonna do, but that doesn't seem to be the case. And so if you weed through it like I did, well, I began to. There's section after section after section. Some is just old, hey, do you wanna update it? Some of it's, oh, your fees aren't consistent, why don't you change them all, make them consistent, whatever. So I'm wondering how you wanna proceed, and I thought maybe, and this is not my place to do, it's yours. But does, do any of the board members wanna jump in and help with some of these sections? Because, you know.
I was, I was under the impression, Stephanie, that they were going to give us the draft legislation for our approval.
Us too.
I was too, and that's not what happened. And so I'm looking at this thinking, I can't possibly do a hundred pages and look up all these things in the next few months by myself.
The good part, the good part about having these recorded, so if that's what that lady said, that's, we're gonna have to hold her feet to the fire, because that's, was the, that was the meaning of the month.
That's what we all understood, yeah.
That's what I understood.
If that's, if that's what she said through our questioning, they're gonna have to do pro bono, because they, they, they didn't negotiate in good faith.
All right, we need to go back to them, but yeah, because just to throw that at us and say, okay, here you go. No, 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 no. Yeah, okay, so that, that we need to.
And don't take, you know, don't get me wrong, I'd certainly be willing to do some of the legal work behind it, because, you know, laws have changed from stuff from nineteen seventies, but some of it, I mean, this is just so cumbersome. I'm not sure what we paid for.
I thought it was too good to be true.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, we'll have continuing discussions on that, and let's see where, where we can go with that.
All right, um, two fifty-seven code and the attorney, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. All right, administrators' report. Mr. Marcus, what do you have for us?
A couple of quick things. We discussed in the workshop, but since we're meeting here in public, hopefully get the information out to the public as well. Route nine A sidewalks, hopefully I should be gearing some green light, hopefully this week or next week, they start to, start that project. The pavilion, we actually got full confirmation on Friday, we're good to go. So the contractor has ordered materials, so hopefully sometime in October, that work could be done. And, and then we had a pre-construction meeting with the paving company. They should be starting in about two weeks to start paving. So does a quickly report for the board and for the public.
Okay, and Marcus, the pavilion was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant, and I think they said around October eighteenth. So I think the board remembers, we allowed last year because of COVID, and they supplied the insurance. We allowed the school to use the pavilion and also the field, so that the kids could be, you know, further apart with the COVID. But, you know, I, I had to say to the principal, principal that, you know, if he has filled out the requirements, he can use it until, you know, October eighteenth, when they start. So I felt a little bad about that, but we, we can't have kids under the pavilion with construction going on. So unfortunately, we won't be able to, to help them out this year. And I think the construction finishes, what, Jan, in January sometime, Marcus?
That's correct, that's the timeline.
Let's get it done. We've been waiting for this. Let's make it happen. Okay, what else do you have for us, Marcus? Anything?
That's it for tonight, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll start with trustee Murray first.
Thanks. In reviewing the bills, we, I was looking at the PBA negotiators' bill. He's, he's billed us fifty-seven hundred dollars so far to do research. And it's, I was just wondering, you know, the contract was only approved in, in March, and he still needed many, many hours, over forty hours, to do research on our contract and researching other departments within Westchester County. I, I thought that might be a little bit high, but, one thing that we haven't had so far was, I believe he was supposed to sit down with the trustees to discuss things that the trustees might want, have included in the contract, similar to what I had requested. And I'd asked Marcus a couple of times if there was anything scheduled. So is anything scheduled, Marcus, for the negotiator to sit down with us before he goes and talks to the PBA? Or do you, PBA, anything scheduled with him?
No, no, not yet. That's what, the, the research, he was trying to gather research, and gonna present to the board all that details that he found, so they tell you what is happening around in the, in the county and, and our area.
So. Some of the things we were billed for, like, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, analyzed and compared health insurance contribution policies in different Westchester County police departments. Another five hundred and seventy dollars to analyze and compare uniform cleaning allowances. And then compared the analysis for another hundred and sixty-five dollars. So I was just wondering, do you have any idea when he was gonna sit down with us, or when negotiations were gonna start to take place?
Uh, no, I can find that with him tomorrow. He was just finished up the, I don't know if he's completed his research yet. So I'll find that, research is being completed, which I think has been, and then I'll get some dates to get to the board for a special executive session or advice from counsel, that he can sit down with the board members, and they tell you what he's found and what his suggestions are, and then hear back from the board.
Okay. Also, I remember over the last couple of months, I had asked for a, a court report similar to the court reports I used to receive when I was a trustee back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. We used to have a list of adjudications, and it continued up until two thousand and fourteen. Just so we could see how many things were being dismissed, how many things were being prosecuted. You know, and, and it helps, because the village board, if I'm not mistaken, is, has some type of responsibility with the court. I remember when we had the negative finding by the comptroller's office, the village board was actually found at fault for not performing its, its legal duties. I don't even remember what those legal duties were, and part of it was the actual court report. I don't think, find, seeing how much was actually sent to the state constitutes a report. I, I really don't know. So I was just wondering if, if we were gonna get a court report, do you have a sample? Marcus, you had said you were gonna look.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Found the old reports, the way we used to receive them?
Uh, in fact, couldn't find the old reports, but I did email the judge and the court clerk. Said that was a, the board would like to get those type of reports back. I sent it to them the day, the same day we spoke. I have not received a response. I'll send a reminder email again, asking for them to provide that report.
If they, they don't even have to be in the same format as they used to be, they can read back the names, because the previous reports didn't have names read back. I, I don't think we need to know the people's name, we just need to know the, we, we need to know the activity, or if we don't need to know the activity, forget about it. You know, I, I don't remember what the law said, and I don't remember what precipitated the, that type of reporting. Do you know, Stephanie?
All right, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly research.
If, if it's not needed, we don't need it. I was wondering if there was any movement on the secretary's position for the planning and zoning board. I, I know there was a vacancy, and there were people who were going to be interviewed or people who had requested to come to the, to be employed. Is there any movement on that?
Um, right now, Cindy and Sharon are taking that responsibility. I have never seen anybody bring interest on it. I don't know what the board members have, but.
The mayor has mentioned something along those lines.
Okay, so.
I, I did not have anyone that was interested. I don't know, you know, you know, have the conversation with Cindy and Sharon if they're willing to continue that. If not, I'm sure there's professional, professional organizations that you can find, you know, to advertise, to get a secretary for that. And it's gonna take them time to get up to speed, you know. The really good thing about our previous secretaries, she had, she had, going back for years, she had, you know, a lot of information stored in her head and, you know, remembered a lot of stuff. So, like I said, it's gonna take a new person some time to get up to speed.
No, I understand. I just didn't know if, if, if that's the direction we were gonna go in, or whether we were going to replace Rosemary. I thought the direction we had talked about was to replace Rosemary.
Yeah, I think there was a discussion we had about that, and I, I can't remember, there was another board member that mentioned something, somebody that they thought they knew, and then I, I didn't hear anymore.
Okay, so we're not actively pursuing a secretary's position for the planning and zoning board?
I guess Cindy and Sharon have agreed to take on those duties.
Okay, are they gonna be compensated differently for that, or should, should we increase their pay for, because Rose, Rosemary was getting paid a couple hundred dollars per meeting? And I know there was a previous agreement years ago, that she would, she would be paid by hourly for the extra. I wouldn't want them to be doing extra, extra work without being compensated, or, you know, because it.
Yeah, Sean, I think we discussed it some time ago, and since they're doing the additional work, the monthly, the amount that Rosemary was getting was two hundred dollars a meeting. Sharon and Cindy are splitting up, depending on how much work they're doing for which meeting, so they're splitting the two hundred dollars between themselves.
Well, it's four hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a meeting, so it's four hundred.
Yeah, two hundred dollars a meeting, that's correct, yes.
Okay, thanks. The other thing, when we were talking about the court report, I was wondering if any violations were written against Con Edison for their construction behind thirty-two oh eight Albany Post Road, which has been something I've been talking about for probably since about two thousand and eighteen. So I, I know I, I had suggested several times to have the billing department write violations against Con Edison for the illegal construction and parking of vehicles on their property. I was wondering if anybody, if Marcus or the mayor had spoken to the building department about that, and where that, where that is.
I don't remember that conversation. What was the address once again, Sean?
Thirty-two oh eight, it's in back of the property adjacent to the auto body shop.
Okay.
Now, had a, took out the entire hill, bulldozed it, has, have cars and vehicles parked there, and it's been going on for several years now. And whenever Con Ed's been notified, they, they've tried to do something, but I believe they have to safeguard their property from illegal occupation, and the, the property should be returned back to its original configuration, or they should be taxed accordingly. Uh, that's also one other thing. Well, has it, has that had any movement at all, Mayor or Marcus, do you know?
On the one that you just discussed?
That's correct, yes.
No, because I, I don't remember having that conversation. I don't remember you saying that, to be quite honest with you, and that's why I wrote that down, so that I will look into that.
Sure, thanks. One other thing, the municipal officials, have they started meeting yet?
They, well, the first meeting is going to be next.
September ninth.
Yeah, September ninth. Oh, shoot. Yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, this, this will be the first meeting, so it'll be this Thursday. I was thinking next Thursday.
So is it an in-person meeting, or is it a virtual meeting?
Yeah, this is gonna be the first in-person meeting since the, since the, the virus, since the COVID.
I was wondering why none of the other, no elected officials received invitations to.
You know what? I haven't seen the invitation myself, and usually the invitation gets forward to the board, and then it goes on. I am on the, I am the secretary this year, and I don't remember getting that invitation, but if you would like to go, you are more than welcome to. Anybody that would like to, let me, let me get that from them and send it, forward it to you and all the board members. So if anybody would like to go, they can go, and I will set up the appointment. I will make the arrangements for them.
I have, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, trustee Funtian, what do you have for us this evening?
Oh, my, police report to begin with. As everybody knows, they, we're always, because of the timing of our meetings, they're, this is their reports from July. July thirteenth, Sergeant Palmeado investigated a possible arrest warrant that was coming out of the village of Buchanan. He confirmed the warrant, arrested the individual, and he was arraigned in the village court. On July nineteenth, Officer Buddy responded to a trespasser on a property. Subject was identified by Officer Buddy, who advised the individual not to return to the property. The owner was satisfied with the situation. To note, you know, this, this is what our police force does, and it's really good that they, you know, you could pick up a phone, and in most locations, you couldn't, you couldn't get this kind, type of service. So I think it makes the citizens here very, feel very safe. And then on July twenty-eighth, Officer John Tierney, resident, reported an unknown on their porch. Officer Tierney identified the subject as a missing person from another jurisdiction. He assisted the return of the individual to that district, jurisdiction with the appreciation of assistance coming from that. Main thing I wanna remember, Saturday, one o'clock, down to Croton, at the memorial for nine eleven. This will be twenty years, and we've got to keep that in mind. I hope everybody can come. It's going to be, otherwise, it should be a very nice day. But let's remember all of those who died, and those who partially died, let's put it that way. And that's all I got, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Rich. And then also, congratulations once again. You are a nine eleven survivor, and you will be the speaker at this, this year's event.
Thank you.
Trustee Zachary, what do you have for us?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'll follow up on that. Anybody that has, especially if you have never seen the memorial, it's, it's a really lovely, lovely memorial to the nine eleven catastrophe. And it's out along the River Walk in Croton, you park, and then you have about a ten-minute walk. There is a picture of it on the village website, first page, where there's some scrolling pictures, you'll see a picture of it, and it's a beautiful spot, it's a beautiful memorial. If you can get there this Saturday for the ceremony at one, I regret that I cannot, because of a family function, but, but I've been to the memorial many times. So if you can get there Saturday, do so at one o'clock. If you can't, get there when you can and see this wonderful memorial. I don't have much else to report right now. I just wanted to follow up. Couple of things that got mentioned already, but one other thing, where are we at with the hiring a planner and rezoning of the Indian Point parcel? Are we have anything scheduled and a workshop? I mean, I think we need to keep that moving. Where are we at with that?
Well, you know, I had mentioned that we were gonna have a special meeting this month, but I'd like to put that on for our workshop, September twenty-eighth, to further discuss that. And I'm kind of hoping we can get some people, we'll put it out on Facebook, we'll send it out on email, we'll advertise. And also, please let our planning and zoning boards know. I'd like to get some feedback from them. I, I think, honestly, I think it's important that we move forward with the rezoning, but, you know, I'm one person, that's, you know, my thoughts. But I'd like to discuss that further at the workshop. And then we have a special meeting in October. We'll, we'll do that before the newsletter goes out.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So one last thing, I just, you know, I, I've been mentioning this for the last few meetings, but I think just need to, once again, encourage people to get that vaccine. If more people had done so, when the vaccine became available, we wouldn't be having this uptick right now. Ninety-nine percent of the people getting sick are people that never got vaccinated. No individual raindrop ever considers themselves responsible for the flood. It takes a lot of raindrops to make a flood. Don't be one of the raindrops. If you're not part of the solution, if you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. Get, if you don't have a health reason not to, get over it, get out there and get the vaccine. That's it. And I would also say, I, I have a little issue with calling medical workers the first line of defense. They're the second line. The first line is every individual and their actions. You are the first line of defense, your decisions. It's, it's when that line of defense fails that the medical people have to kick in, and they're certainly overtaxed, but, but they're not the first line, you are. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Nick, trustee Capocotti, what do you have for us this evening?
Oh, what do I have?
Oh, where do I start?
Where do I start? Well, I'll keep this brief, because it's getting late. I just wanna excuse myself for being. I just want to excuse myself for being not not being present at the last meeting. I was under the weather. You know, I I hope to do better for the community moving forward. I I just I I bring light to nine eleven. I mean, it's it's a twenty years. It's it's significant to a lot of people, a lot of good. Lot of people, everybody remembers where you were on that day, so it's just. Just keep it keep it close to your heart and and, you know. Honor those that have given and given all they have given. And 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 those that have served and continue to serve and our firefighters, our police, our EMS, everybody who's our first responders, of course. I just, I I'm feeling better now, and I'm I'm glad to be alive and living in the village of Buchanan.
There you go.
This is a wonderful village, and and I hope that the community, and like you said, we start to work together, Mayor, and 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 move forward. And and make this village a. Make it better than it is now. And I don't know if that's possible, but I just want to keep going in this direction. The one thing I want to bring up is in in a newsletter recently, the the latest newsletter for September, this is something I've been meaning to talk about. The December first parking, overnight parking. I believe that we need to restructure that. I'd like to work on that. Maybe we can come up with an idea. Of, I mean, I've had a lot of people complain, you know, when I was campaigning about, you know, parking overnight. And I like to try and get ahead of this before we get into the winter weather. You know, I had an idea that was maybe we, like the town of Cortland has robo calls for their for their storm preparations and and anything coming that would be disaster related. You know, maybe the village can come up with a a robo call to set up a timeframe for people to take their cars off the street. I mean, our storms not only happen, you know, they happen during the day as much as they happen overnight. I mean, so it's like we're I I've been in a situation myself where my my kids have put the cars on the streets. I've gotten tickets. No big deal. I'll pay the tickets, but, you know, it could affect somebody financially down the road in other situations, and and I think we should work with the community a little bit in that regard. I think we can have a robo call come out with a timeframe. This is when your car needs to be off the street, and this is when you can put it back on the street, regardless of whether it's day or night. Helps the DOT, helps us clean the roads during the day as well as it does during the night. So I I mean, something to look into. I don't know how we can get that done, but I'd like to move forward. Maybe Marcus can help me out with that a little bit. Looking into some kind of robo call, letting the people know what to do.
Sure.
You know.
We do have Code Red, so we do have access to Code Red, so.
No, I know. Marcus did explain that to me to Code Red, and and I I'd like to dive into that a little deeper and maybe do this call that would, you know, for anything like the town does. When they call you, there's a storm coming. It is coming, you know, just be a little bit more communicable with the communicable with the people.
I usually do do that, Anthony, but I I've had complaints because, and I've asked the town, please not to put the robo call to here. Because then they get a call from the village, and then they start getting angry. How many calls do we need to get? So the the last this last storm, they had the town had two robo calls, and I felt that that covered it. But other storms before we've we've used it or other emergency situations, we've used it too.
Yeah, no, I just. I appreciate the town's, you know, calls, but I think it's significant for us to, you know, be the village, be our be our own, our, you know, is if we can get this. Just with the parking alone, I think it's a big help to the community. I think a lot of people, especially people that are new to the community, they don't really know the law. They don't know how effective we are with it. And 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 I think it it helps the the street cleaning as much as it helps with with everything else. So I mean, just something to work on. Other than that, I, you know, I got nothing else to say. Just, you know, enjoy your 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 weekend and thanks for. Thanks. Thanks for making me a board member. I'm hoping I hope it make you proud.
Yep, yep, the community wanted you here to speak for them. So also, you know, Anthony, we could, I we're gonna have a big agenda for the workshop. But, you know, maybe we'll we'll ask the police chief's opinion and also Bob Wheeler's opinion on the parking, the winter parking.
Yeah, I mean, they can be subject to tow if 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 we then I'll move. I mean, it's it just helped. It just benefits the village even more, the process than than anything else. I mean, it keeps the roads clean during the day and at night. I mean, you know, Lindsey Avenue. When we have a storm during the day, you saw you see what Lindsey Avenue looks like. I mean, we want to get these roads cleaned. I'm just trying to get it get ahead of it before the winter months come. That's all.
Yeah, no, now's a good time to talk about it. Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to remind everybody to come out and support the support the beautification committee. They're having their plant sale on Saturday, September eighteenth. Rain day will be the nineteenth. They do a lot of good things for the village. They do all the pretty flowers and and everything out at the circle and the boxes, so. We all support them.
And so is that the circle, right?
Yes, it's at the circle. Yep.
What do you know that does it? What time?
From nine to one.
Nine to one. Thanks.
I've had several calls about mail issues. When I went to speak today to the postmaster, he was not in, so I will catch up with him tomorrow. And get back to everybody with what the problem was. We didn't have mail deliveries in a large part of the village Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, so. Not good. It's the first of the month. People are looking for things in the mail, so. So we discussed that. We'll we'll discuss more about Indian Point at the workshop. The work will begin. It worked out well out of the circle. We had a pre-construction meeting for the circle renovations. So that work will be starting on September twentieth, and that money is a grant from Entergy. Also, in October, I'd like to do a community event thing where we plant daffodils up on top of the hill where the new tree is in that area. So we'll be talking about that more. Just September twenty fifth is Buchanan Community Day. That will be from four to eight. We will have entertainment. We're gonna have six-string country. We're gonna have someone coming at six o'clock to teach line dancing. The fire department will be there cooking hamburgers and hot dogs, and the police department will be giving out ice cream. And for the kids, they'll be pumpkin painting. So we we we're doing something a little different this year with the COVID. It probably wasn't a good idea to have bouncy castles this year, so we just want to make sure everybody stays.
Stay hours for that again, Teresa?
That is gonna be four to eight on September twenty fifth. Also, with the storm Ida, we we were fortunate. We did not get what Lower Westchester and the city and other areas got. They got slammed and a lot of flooding, but I'm not gonna say too much because we do have another soaker coming through tomorrow night, Wednesday night into Thursday, so. But hopefully we keep missing these bullets, so we've been pretty lucky. And that's all I have for this evening. And now we have, we have only a few people left. Comments from the floor? Would anyone like to make a comment? We'll wait a second. No? We answered everyone's questions. Okay, all right, so no, I see no hands raised, no comments from the floor. We do not have an executive session this evening. We've covered everything unless anyone has anything they need to bring up, otherwise on a motion. To close the meeting. Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.
Good night.